Good morning. Welcome, everybody, to the June 15 County Board meeting. I'm Board Chair Libby Garvey, in case anyone doesn't know, with my colleagues, Vice Chair Takis Karantounas, members Matt Deefranti, Susan Cunningham, and Maureen Coffey. And thank you all who came here to join us in the room. And I think a number of us are joining remotely through Microsoft Teams. Masks are optional, but you notice some of us are wearing masks. And if you would like a mask, they are available from the clerk at the dais or in the atrium from our staff. So please feel free to avail yourself of a mask if you would like. And I think before we get started, I just wanted to have a brief comment on the passing of our longtime treasurer, former treasurer Frank O'Leary. And I think we have a slide to put up that we can put up. Frank passed last week. And remarkable, remarkable man. I had the pleasure of knowing him pretty well. He actually took me under his wing when most of the Democratic Party was trying to just kind of make me go away. And Frank is a great guy. He did a lot for the treasurer's office. He also suffered, he did not suffer fools lately, and was a force of nature in so much of what he took on. And he always had a major cause. And I don't know how many of us here have been able to get through life without giving money to Frank, not as a treasurer, but because of some cause that he was raising money for. And that includes down in our lobby, you can see the model of the USS Arlington that's down there. He did so much on that. I actually had a fantastic ride on that ship, which I at first called a boat, and I learned I'm not supposed to call that a boat, it's a ship. But I had a wonderful ride and experience there getting to know people, and that really was through the efforts of Frank. It wasn't just for me, it was a whole delegation that went down when they commissioned the ship. And it's a great relationship that continues to this day, and a lot he's done with the Historical Society, of course, as well. So I will invite my colleagues, if there are anything that they would like to talk about. I think most of us have had some acquaintance with Frank, and you don't ever forget it. Maureen, I'll start, I'll talk with you, with Coffey.
I'll start. I'll probably have briefer remarks, because I, in 2014, I was not yet out of college. I was not an Arlington resident. And yet, when I joined the Young Dems and the Arlington Democratic Party, Frank O'Leary was one of those institutions that you didn't get through more than a couple of meetings without someone saying, oh, you should talk to Frank about that, or, well, you know who really knows what's going on. And I think the work that he's done within the community to build relationships, build across different facets of people, is really important, but also his dedication to elections, to voting, to getting out. You know, I think Arlington has a really good tradition of voting, but Frank led the way with trying to analyze all of our turnout data and really make some very educated, impressive guesses. And, you know, that's kind of how I know him best, but I think this is obviously very sad for our whole community.
Takis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for letting the public know that Frank O'Leary passed. And this is Arlington, losing an outstanding public servant. I mean, more than three decades of service, this is something to behold. I had the opportunity, I had the privilege to get to know him, interact with him in his office, especially towards the end of his tenure as a treasurer. I rarely have met a more astute and thoughtful, what I call the strategic elected official. We connected over two things. First of all, our love for statistics as a mathematic discipline. And the second is the slightly unexpected channel of common interests I had with him, or shared interest and passion for the history, and especially the local history here in Arlington. He would not miss a chance to repeat his request, since I got elected, to fund the restoration of the historic Hume School, the home of the Arlington Historical Society. And he was very clear about how much, it was a million dollars in bonded money. So even from the good place where he is now, I hear him saying, you know, with his pleasant but very resolute insistence that you expect from an Irish person, it's time to bond that money, and the county owns it to itself. I mean, I hold it very dear as my last memory of him. So God bless him, may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Deefranti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If someone has, I will try to be succinct. Few points. Frank's commitment to public service and one of his legacies, he vastly improved our tax collection by automating it. And over years, I think we all want to make sure that if we're paying taxes, others are paying their fair share too. And he just vastly improved that. And so that is a huge accomplishment as a public servant. In 2014, I listened at the National Rural Electric Cooperative as he shared his 30 years of service. He was so clear how committed he was to customer service. And just, I'll never forget his comments as he retired, and just an extraordinary person. Part of his legacy is our current treasurer, Carla de la Pava, who he took a deep interest in helping to elect. And I think she has been outstanding, as well as, I think it's important that he was committed to her success as our first Latina elected, I think, countywide. And that was important to him. He loved history, and he wanted Arlington to be aware of its history. History doesn't repeat itself, it does rhyme, and he wanted us to be aware so that we would rhyme in better ways. And then I talked a couple of days ago to Paul Ferguson, and Frank wanted to tell people he loved them as he passed. He had leukemia, he fought very hard, but when his time came, he made sure to tell people how much he cared about them. So we benefited deeply from Frank. We'll all miss him. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
I also just wanted to reiterate what an amazing gift he gave this community, not just in his leadership, but particularly on the operations here in tax collection. Nobody loves tax collection, but it is what makes our community wonderful by giving us the resources to invest in our schools, in our parks, in our people. And he didn't just automate and make it a little better, he brought it from 9% delinquency to 0.5% delinquency, which is incredible, and then trained up Carla and encouraged her along the way to bring it even farther down. So we are an exceptional community in our ability to achieve things, and in our ability to be fair, and have everyone play their part, in large part because of Frank's effort. So I'm grateful for him.
Oh, thank you. And he also, I'm forgetting the term, but he actually came up with a way of, you know, governments aren't allowed to, like, put money aside and then make money on the interest, just, there's all kind of rules about that. And he found a way for us, because we have to keep, you know, we have to keep some money for us to be able to get some of that interest. And I'm sure the manager could explain it better than I. But he really was, really thought out of the box, and did a whole lot to, as I say, make this county what it is. But he could be prickly at times, and, which really, I think, overall benefited the county and kept us all really on our toes. Mr. Schwartz, I don't know if you would like to add anything? You, of course, knew Frank.
Well, the first time I met, well, I met Frank when I was a young person, but when I used to work over at the Office of Management and Budget, Frank, I saw Frank one day prowling the halls, this is in the federal government.
In OMB?
Yeah, in OMB. I go, Frank, what are you doing here? He goes, Mark, I'm here because we have to change the federal legislation on the offset for hotels and businesses that don't remit their payments. And he's in there with the financial management staff, giving them, it was the full Frank O'Leary. And it was, I was just, I was so entertained, but he worked year after year, and eventually there was some change in federal legislation due to the work he had. He was really proud of that, but not quite as proud as he was of Project Alpo. He kept talking to me about that, which is one way to get scofflaws who hadn't paid their taxes. One day, he had offered free dog food to certain residents of the county to bring their dogs in, and as soon as they came in, he served them with the papers saying that they were in debt to the county. And he would always bring that up to me. So that, I think, was the best combination I can hear, someone who is tenacious, but somebody who was, he had a great sense of humor, and he used it for public good.
He absolutely did. He will be missed. I mean, even now, you know, we've got a primary going on, and I've kind of, what are the numbers? And I used to regularly consult with Frank. What does this mean? What do you think? How is it? Because he would always have it at his fingertips. Most of the time, he was right. I think modern politics started, things started to sort of change, but he was great, and our deepest sympathy goes out to Linda and the family. But none of us are going to forget Frank O'Leary. So thank you. And I think we had another, I wanted to also talk, well, just before we get to public comment, I think we have a slide up about, today's the last day, I believe, for in-person absentee voting, which is what we call it, which you can, I believe, do downstairs. This is for the primary. And here is the information. I think I'll ask Ms. Cunningham to talk about this a little bit, because she's really been pushing, we really need to let people know, we need to know about ranked choice, and today's a great reminder.
Great, yeah. Just today is the last day of early vote. Tuesday, your regular polling places will be open. And this is a dual primary, so you can choose to do either the Democratic primary or the Republican primary, not both, you have to pick one. If you are doing the Democratic primary, which does have multiple folks running for this body to replace Chair Garvey's seat when she retires, we will be using ranked choice voting again, so you have an option to pick up to three, and there's no reason not to just put them in the order that you prefer them. You have one vote. If your first person gets knocked out, it'll roll to your second. If your second gets knocked out, it'll roll to your third. You don't have to put all three, and you can't put the same person three times, or you'll be asked to do it again. So make sure you share your voice. You can vote, actually, right down the hall until 5:00 PM today, if you're here in person, and again, at your polling place on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I briefly add?
Yes.
Virginia has same-day voter registration, which means that if you have not pre-registered, if you have moved since the last time you registered, you can show up to early vote or your polling location on Election Day and cast a provisional ballot while you register. And so moving is not, is no longer a barrier to being able to vote. I think it's really important that we share that. You do need to bring all of the information you would need to register. And if you go on Election Day, you do need to be at your polling location for your current residential address, which may be different than your previous polling location. And so highly encourage everyone to either go to the Virginia Elections website or iwillvote.com, which always has the best information on where, when, and how to vote.
Thank you so much. So no matter who you're voting for, when you're voting, vote. That's the point. Please do vote. All right, now we get to public comment, and I know there's some folks here, for people who are here in person, the podium right here in front of us has a height that can be adjusted. There's a button with up and down arrows to the right of the podium, we need to get there. I think you can see that. And then please speak clearly into the microphone, of course, which is on for now, so you're good to go. And if you've got some written documents you'd like, please give them to our clerk, Mr. Kushner, to my right, to your left. For remote speakers, I think we may have a few, please keep your microphones muted and your cameras off till you call in to speak, but then you've got to unmute yourself using either star six, if you're on the phone, or clicking on the icon at the bottom of your screen, if you're on Teams. We have, I think, a Spanish interpreter available here. Do we have, yes. Would you please introduce yourself in English and Spanish? Thank you.
Good morning, Johanna Marquina, Spanish interpreter. Buenos dias, Johanna Marquina, interprete de español.
Gracias. And I think that's it for those that are watching. I often say, and this is throughout the day, these meetings can go on, sometimes we get up and stretch our legs, we go to the back, but there might, we can hear you back there. You may not be able to see us, but we can hear you, because we do have it broadcasted in the back. And with that, I think we're ready to take our public comments speakers. And Mr. Kushner, do you want to start with that? I think everybody's already been told that there's one person per item to comment. Yeah, thank you, go ahead.
Yes, our first speaker is Paul Nolan, followed by Henry Staples.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan.
Good morning. This is my second appearance before the board, so I don't really have to give a big introduction to you, but for those behind me and those at home, this is the second board meeting. I have attended, or my wife has attended nine open doors, all with the same issue that started earlier this year, which is the county stopped funding my daughter, who has disabilities, stops funding her transportation to her Adult Day program. I have given a statement on behalf of my daughter to you all today. That issue is still outstanding. That's why I come to every one of these meetings. It's the definition of insanity. I do not expect a different result, but I will keep coming. I'm here today in particular because, the reason why, despite some of you coming back saying you will hear from staff, I have not heard from staff. Staff has refused to meet with myself and my wife. They are now telling you that you shouldn't meet with me, because I have, my daughter has an appeal going on with DMS on a totally unrelated matter. If I was a member of the group suing the county on the multi-housing issue, would you deny me a meeting on a permit issue for my house? If I was a developer, and I was appealing a decision from the zoning board, would you deny a meeting with me on some other issue, maybe a water use permit or so forth? This is an infringement of my daughter's right to exercise her right for an appeal to redress something totally unrelated to the denial of her transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. And we will make comment, as Mr. Nolan knows and others may not, we do make responses to the comments at the end, after everybody has spoken, so we will say something. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, our next speaker is Henry Staples, followed by Sam Levinson.
Yep.
You got it. There you go.
Good morning. I'm here talking about the code enforcement, and I don't know, I'm going like this, talking about code enforcement in 11th and Vermont. I sent my notes earlier, but it was just a while ago, so you may not have them. It's that project that's one block north of Fairfax Drive, one block east of Glebe Road, and it's an infill project that replaces a church and a house with a seven-story building. And then across the street, there's a parking lot that's being made into townhouses. On plan, it looks mostly set off by streets, but in feel, it's a tight area that is bounded greater than three-quarters by nearest neighbors. And some of those neighbors don't have the luxury of being away from the site, so they live through the development during the day and then through the night. There's always something happening, and there's always some nearest neighbor shouldering the responsibility for the county. The violations aren't surprising, trucks devising new transportation routes, fluid project boundaries, unlocked fences, someone banging on something at midnight. Their violations in a whole has just been too much, but we feel it doesn't have to be this way. We all want it done, and we want it done safely. Safety's an everyday activity in everything you do. Today, I ask you to please represent those nearest neighbors with that concern and let them know they are heard. Ask the county manager to believe the neighbors, to show by word and act that the county is in front of them. Ask the county manager what else can be done. Ask the county manager to find a dozen things they could do better for this project. Please draw a line and make it clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Staples. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Sam Levinson, followed by Richard McNamara.
Before I start, I did send an attachment.
Give me just a moment.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd like to address head-on two criticisms that the board has brought up on a ceasefire resolution for Palestine. Number one is, we don't weigh in on international affairs. In 2019, the board issued proclamations for both Peruvian and Ecuadorian National Day, which mentioned that, "In 1821, a declaration of independence from Spain was proclaimed by a patriotic and sovereign junta," all of which you could see in A and B up there. To me, and I would think to most people, that would be considered weighing in on international affairs. Number two, there are people on both sides of the issue, so we shouldn't weigh in. But that's not always okay to do. For example, would we sympathize with both Ashkenazi Jews and Nazi Germany? Would we let the fact that Nazis at least allegedly cared about environmentalism and animal welfare distract from the genocides they committed? No, of course not. So when Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, the Center for Constitutional Rights, B'TL, the UN, and numerous other human rights and humanitarian organizations have massive lists of Israeli war crimes, since October 7th, also since before that, as you can see in figure C, most of us rightly understand that both sides in the issue just feels really messed up. And I also want to point out that just because many people living in so-called Israel right now are descendants of Holocaust survivors, doesn't inherently mean that they should be allowed to do whatever the hell they want with no consequences. So I'd like to know, what are the real reasons that the board is refusing to pass a ceasefire resolution? Is it weighing in on international affairs of the past? Do you think the JCRC is a more credible and less biased resource than Amnesty? Are you too concerned about a smear campaign from the ADL? Please, at the very least, be honest when responding to this public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a moment, please.
Next speaker, please. I think it's Mr. McNamara, is that correct?
Yes, next speaker is Richard McNamara, followed by Bobby Fisher.
Good morning. Let's see. My name is Dick McNamara, and I'm an active member of the Woodmont Civic Association and the Arlington County Civic Federation on the Board of Directors. Last week, I attended a zoning board here regarding an EHO project at 2400 North Lincoln Street, being proposed to replace a single-family home with three townhouses, each between $1.2 to $1.5 million in the Crystal Dover area. At the meeting, an adjoining neighbor, using material delivered to the county by the developer, presented information where the builder provided faulty information, faulty by omission, particularly regarding trees and root protection. In particular, a four-to-five-foot diameter tree, about 85 feet tall, is omitted in totality. Okay? You can imagine how that root system goes across into other yards. The tree joins a common fence. This missing information, if properly addressed, may impact the location of the buildings. Okay? The county staff apparently do not go on-site and audit everything that's presented to them. They believe that when arborists certify things, that they are factual. Well, that's not the case here. In fact, I did see staff comments that list all of the adjoining property trees, which were not, which was not done, and this 85-foot tree was not called. Now, even with that information, the zoning board approved it. And so three things that come out to me is precedent set, okay? Developers have no consequence if they lie and get through the hoops. B, an old-fashioned variance process would be very helpful to have local citizens complement the staff reviews. Three, those firms caught doing this fraud should have their licenses suspended and any permitting to do business around here stopped. If we're going to have EHO, we need to apply rules and manage it properly, which I don't think we do. Now, in summary, the zoning board said that you are the ones who did not give them the authority to do anything.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara, your time's the last.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. We will address your comments in just a moment. Thank you.
Our next and final speaker is Bobby Fisher.
Yes, you are.
Okay. This is not a good morning for me. As a black woman, November 2023, two days before Thanksgiving, Diane Krech had two white county police officers to ban me three years, not to attend Sherrlington Library. Diane Krech raises charge of me disrespectful in the past. Diane Krech sought to punish my First Amendment right to free speech, not to speak about homeless people taking over county libraries. Via email, I sent pictures of homeless people sleeping in front of the library, pushing their carts inside the library, Aurora Hills and Sherrlington Library. I hope county managers, elected Democrats, are accountable for making libraries in Arlington a toxic, unhealthy, and unsafe environment. I demand the firing of Diane Krech, library director of the county. Also, I hope, Takis, you, county manager, who I met in a meeting regarding my homeless complaint, Arlington Democrats will not silence my voice. My black voice will be heard, and I will sue the government.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Is that our final speaker?
That is our final public comment speaker.
All right, thank you. So we had a number of speakers today. Thank you all for coming in. First was Mr. Paul Nolan, talking about transportation for his daughter and appeal. I will see if my colleagues have some comments, too. I know, Mr. Nolan, you've been here, you come regularly to Open Door Monday and comment. Perhaps I haven't been told not to talk to you, and if you come to Open Door Monday, I will talk to you. Or if you want to make another meeting, I'm happy to talk to you. So I'm not quite sure what that is about. I know you do have an appeal that is down in Richmond, and it is my understanding that although you don't like the way, the process that your daughter is being transported, that she is being transported with your son and is able to reach her program during the day. I understand that that's the case. Can you not, is she getting to her program with the transportation?
No, she's getting to her program, but she's going to ask her.
Yeah, no, thank you. That's, I don't, yeah, my point was here, not how she was doing it.
Confuse this.
You know, I made a mistake.
She has a right to save transportation.
Thank you.
To aid under her own right.
Thank you. And that's what's being appealed, that's what's being appealed. She is, it's just for people, for people who are listening.
But it's being appealed to something totally unrelated, doing with Medicaid waivers and waitlists.
Thank you. And that, that, that's.
Do with transportation.
Thank you. That what's being appealed is something that has to be determined in Richmond. We don't actually determine it. And all I want to make clear for those that may be watching is that she is actually getting trans, it may not be the way you want it and under the terms that you'd like it, but she is getting transportation. I don't know if anybody else would like to say anything. Mr. Carringtonis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Nolan, I'm very sorry that you have to come twice here. I actually thought this is the third time, but maybe I'm wrong.
I think that's the reason.
In many Open Door Mondays, we feel very strongly about finding a solution to this altogether, staff and a county board, et cetera. I have a question for the county manager. What is the, let's imagine that this board would have the legal magic wand to resolve this. What action should we, are we asked to take? What action should we consider?
I'm not sure that I actually know there is something that we could do at this point because of the Medicaid rules and sort of the appeal that's underway, but I will get back to you. I've, we've had multiple conversations about this. If I had a way to completely satisfy Mr. Nolan, we would have done it by now, but I think that there are some challenges based on the rules that we have to follow.
Yeah, thank you.
Why can't I have a meeting with Adida Frieden and the manager? So we can discuss this and keep the appeal out?
I think we need to talk about, if you would like to talk about this later with us, I think I'm, we're not going to debate it here right now. I think we've had a lot of circular conversations, and we do want to, as Mr. Carringtonis said, we do want to resolve this. It's just really difficult, given the rules that we have to operate under. Any other comments? Mr. DiFranti?
Just that I do want to follow up the county manager on the separate request of a meeting with staff. You mentioned the example of EHOs. We don't, in every case, have meetings and much to perhaps Mr. McNamara and others' concerns. We don't, in every case, do a meeting with staff and EHOs because we feel that single-family homes, we don't have those meetings, so multiple units, just for your context. But I do want to follow up on the question. I do think it's both fair of you to ask, and it's also important to understand that there are instances, for my own part, where there are legal issues involved, where I don't end up thinking that it's quite appropriate for a meeting with staff without a county board member there. Staff should certainly be accountable. The county board should address when there are issues that are sort of systemic and policy-related. So I'll follow up. That was our conversation on Monday. I'll follow up on the question of a meeting with staff. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to Mr. Staples, who has, this has been an ongoing issue, and I believe our staff does continue to reach out and is planning to get more people on-site to be there to help out. I know it's difficult. The construction is really hard. We are following this issue very closely. Every time you write in, we check in. We follow the response from our staff, and hopefully it can be completed. But I understand that the construction is really difficult. I don't know if anybody has, would like to add anything to that, Mr.? Go ahead, Ms. Coffey.
I just, I have a question, and, Mr. Manager, you may not know this answer just yet. Do we know, I feel like this has been a development that has been dragging on and on. Do we know what the projected conclusion date is?
I don't have that information, and I know that, I've driven by the site many times. We've had various staff about 80 times go out to the site and speak with the site supervisor, and we've taken several steps, but the thing we're praying for is that the construction ends as quickly as possible. I don't have a date on that, but I will get back to you.
Okay. That'd be helpful to know, because I think we are, we are on a unfortunate path, and I'm not sure 80 times, 80 more will do, I wish that it would, but I just am not sure. And so if we can try and get a, an end date and hold them to that and get them out, I think that will resolve this better than anything else.
Yeah, it would. And I, I actually would like to thank Mr. Staples for coming in and for, for sending in when there are issues, because we cannot have eyes on the site all the time, and I think there are a lot of efforts being made, but they slip up every now and then, and when they do, you know, and we do get out there. So thank you for that. We appreciate you staying, you know, keeping in touch with us and letting us know what's going on. All right. Next issue was Mr. Lavison, who came in about the wanting us to take a position on the situation in the Middle East, which we've discussed a number of times. I think when you started out, saying with criticism of the ceasefire, I don't think anybody at this table is criticizing a ceasefire per se. I think we'd all like to have that horrible, horrible conflict stop. We do, on occasion, recognize local groups and organizations who are having celebrations. That's what the Ecuador Day and Peru Day were about. Not so much international affairs, but actually what's going on right here with events and celebrations of this culture that they're having here in Arlington. As we have said many times, international ceasefires in the Middle East are not really in our purview at all. We've got local government. We've got a lot to do here to make the world a better place, just right here, which is our authority. And as I have said before, I think if taking a position on this would actually help situation, get a little more light and a little less heat, I think then we would really entertain it. But at the moment, any kind of position would do nothing to help situation, would create more heat, no light, and that is not anything that we want to do. Any other comments that people would like to make? Mr. Carringtonis?
Just, just for a moment, because it has been said several times that this board has taken a position in international affairs before, because we celebrated the Peruvian National Day or the Argentinian National Day or, or the Salvadorian National Day, et cetera. This is really not, this is honoring a festive occasion that is, you know, relevant to a lot of our fellow residents there. This is the, you know, the Independence Day of their home countries. This is to show that we see them and we respect them, and this has absolutely nothing to do with current national affairs, like taking a position on, on an ongoing war.
Okay. Anything else? And then I would encourage you, which, as we do every time, it is our congressmen and our senators at the federal level who do have a role to play, and really encourage people to continue to contact them and demonstrate as you, as you can. Thank you. Then we had Mr. McNamara on, coming in on EHO, worried about going to the zoning board. I, I think I might ask our attorney to explain a little bit what the zoning board does. In other words, why it is, we have a possibility about zoning, and any kind of zoning applies to EHOs, it does to something else. Permitting issues is something different. I don't know if you want to outline a little bit that, how, because when people go, because it does, we are following the same rules that we follow for everybody else, and they are limited as to what we can do and what the zoning board can do.
Yeah. So the Board of Zoning Appeals can hear variance requests, which is defined by statute, and it's pretty narrow. It's not, I, I don't think it's what Mr. McNamara was referring to or what he has in mind when he talks about variances. As far as the particular hearing, I believe that was an appeal of a zoning administrator determination, which is something that the BZA also hears. They don't hear policy issues. They don't hear, you know, they're, they're not there to consider use permits. And so the only question before the BZA at that point was, did the zoning administrator act correctly, i.e., did she follow the ordinance, or did she not? And because EHO is by right, and because the EHO permit is simply a review of, did they meet the strict requirements of the ordinance? Not are they going to build it, not are they going to build it in accordance with this picture that they've submitted. It's only, does that plan comply with the ordinance? That's the only issue that the BZA is taking up.
Thank you. Now, where would people go if they're concerned about it not complying with what they've done? The permit's not improper? So a different issue, which I think is what Mr. McNamara was coming to talk about.
So again, the, the process has several steps, and depending on the issue, the, the dispute could come at different steps. The EHO review is simply a review of, does the application meet the strict requirements of the zoning ordinance? And again, it's by right. It's not a, it's not a consideration of what the conditions are. It's simply, here's the ordinance, does the application meet it? After that, if the developer decides to continue trying to build it, which they may not, and often they do not, with EHO and single-family development, just because you ask for a permit doesn't mean you will construct it. But after the permit, the EHO permit is issued, if they want to, for example, start construction that would move more than 2,400 square feet of land, they go to get the LDA permit. And there are requirements for stormwater management and other things related to that. The urban forester also participates, both at the EHO permit level and then during the LDA 2.0 process. And then, when it's time to actually do construction, that is when ISD, our inspection services folks, would go out, review the actual building plan that's submitted by an architect and engineer, make sure that it complies only with the building code. Again, not a policy decision as to whether, you know, it will impact neighbors. It's just, does this plan and the way it is planned to be constructed comply with the building code?
And that would include the tree, right, that he's concerned about?
The tree review comes in during LDA and EHO.
Thank you.
Not during the construction permit stage. At the point of the construction permit review, zoning does also do a second level of review to make sure that what is being proposed to be built is consistent with what was initially applied for, for the EHO permit.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Cunningham, did you have something you wanted to add? As you can see, Mr. McNamara, it's very complex, and I'm going to try to get to a point to you know, to know who to go to about that tree. Yeah.
Yeah. Can, can we clarify whether during the initial EHO permit, there is an urban forestry review of the plans, or that's later?
There is. There, there is, because there is the requirement in our ordinance for shade tree planting. So they do that level review. I don't believe they, you know, go out and measure the, the roots and all that sort of stuff.
And so for any property, in the event that a owner or a neighbor or anyone discovers there appears to be misrepresentation of the trees, what is the compliance path there? Maybe, Mr. Manager. So if, if someone, if I submit a plan to double the size of my house and just forget that there are 12, you know, 200-year-old trees at the edge on my neighbor's property, what's, how does that get caught? And if it is caught, how does it get enforced?
I don't have the precise answer to that, but I think, as the county attorney said, when we're going through the LDA permit, usually that is something that is absolutely examined and reviewed. As far as the impact on root structure, I don't think there's anything specific in our ordinance that allows us to address that impact on other property owners.
Got it. Okay. So it's at the LDA stage, which hasn't happened yet on this property, right? So there's the first EHO permit that says, in theory, you could build something that's EHO. Then there's the building permit request, which includes, or even just a demolition request, which would include LDA. So that is the place where you'll want to keep focused and make sure to continue to request compliance. And, Mr. Manager, can a neighbor request a site visit from the urban forester?
I think, I can't tell you, because I know our urban foresters quite well, they're supposed to respond to questions that come up in the context of a permit, and sometimes, I know they get calls from citizens where they're not in the business of showing up and providing advice to every resident in the county about what's going on on their property. But since I know our urban foresters sometimes do that, I'm not going to encourage people to do that. We shouldn't be doing it, but sometimes we go above and beyond.
So the appropriate action would be when, when the permit, when the LDA permit is filed, if the filing appears to have an error, then at that point to contact the urban forestry department and ask for their re-review?
Yes.
That was done, and it was referred to EHO later. Any more?
Sure. So, and, and I know we don't have the slide from our last meeting, but maybe we could reiterate that there, there are three levels of review, and it's very confusing, because we're all going through it for the first time. But the EHO review that that one is in right now, and check me if I'm wrong, is, is really just a, could one, is this parcel one where you could build an EHO building? It does not yet get into the specifics, which is frustrating. I hear you. It, it doesn't get into the full review, which happens during a building permit of all the details. It will. It won't get built without that happening, but we're, you know, there's sort of the, the first, you, you may consider designing something here, and then there's the, now it's designed properly and you may build it, right? We're not yet to that second stage, if that makes sense.
I don't know which, I don't know which stage we're at. I'm just addressing the BZA's role.
Okay. Gotcha. All right. So I'd be happy to talk with you further.
Yeah. We're, thank, thank you. I think what we need to do, Mr. McNamara, we've got your information, you've probably written in before, but we're going to try to get to you exactly whom you should go and talk to and where, where it is. There's many different levels of review. The whole process, even without EHO, is not as clear as it should be. We're working hard to make it clear. We're going to do a report on EHO, I believe, in July at our next meeting. Mr. Schwartz, I think you're going to be doing a general overall view, which I hope will touch on some of these issues.
Yes.
Yeah. And we're going to try to make it clear where you can do appeals, at which point in the process, and to where it should go. Because I know it's frustrating if you think it's zoning, but it actually isn't. It's a different, it's a different level. Mr. Carringtonis?
I think Ms. Coffey was before me, or?
I'm, I'm.
Go ahead. Takis, go ahead.
Fine. Ms. McNamara, I, I hear you. I don't believe that all this is so complicated, and for the following reason. I believe that what you're bringing before us is that some developers, some client of developer, clients of developers have an additional incentive to try to game the system. And they try to under-report their tree canopy so that they can get away with more abilities to manage the, the coverage of their lot. We're working on the coverage of the lot that comes after that, but this is not an EHO problem only. It is a problem with all developments in Arlington, and it, and in my experience from the constituent input that I have, it got exacerbated, or it got, it got more visible when, I mean, two or three years ago, when we updated, significantly updated, our land disturbance ordinance here, so that, that is now more mandatory in terms of what kind of forestry has to be preserved and how it has to be declared, and it set a set of rules that is more onerous to those who want to get rid of all these trees like that. That doesn't limit their by-right ability to do that, but it increases the regulatory burden for them to do that. Now, EHOs actually added to that. They, they are even more restrictive with preservation of trees. And this logically may be interpreted by some people that, well, this is to onerous, and in order to get what they want, they, they may want to try to game the system. So I take, take really note of what you're saying. And we, we have to see whether, you know, our supervision and our ability to, to monitor that and make, you know, and, you know, make it difficult for those who want to undercut this or, you know, circumvent the regulation to do so, and not, and definitely also not letting them do with impunity. I hear that. This is something interesting to, to.
Absolutely. Follow up on. Yes. We will follow up.
But just say, 146 single-family homes are built under the, exactly the same rules, and they do the exactly the same, produce the same problems. It's not.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Correct. But I hear you.
The permitting process is the issue.
Yeah. So it's, which we need to get a lot clearer, and we need to do better job on the enforcement and the monitoring, which we are going to look into on this particular issue. Maureen, Ms. Coffey?
I think Mr. Carringtonis hit kind of similar points. You know, I think this is not a problem with EHO. This is a problem with the by-right development process, and I, I really hope that our dedicated watchdogs are also seeking out these single-family home by-right developments and reviewing their permits to make sure that they're in compliance as well, because I'm certain that these things are happening regardless of how many units are being built on the lot. And I think, you know, one of the frustrations with EHO is that we've created a by-right process that has a preliminary step that still leads to a by-right process, and it feels like more should be happening in between those two things, because when we do, you know, larger-scale development with a site plan, there's, there's all of this debate and, and work that goes in, but we've created a situation where the expectations are, are not aligned with what a by-right process really is. Because when you do a normal by-right process, usually they're going straightforward with the project, and this is a step before the step where they're going to go forward. And so I think working together to really clarify what it is. And so I think working together to really clarify what it is that people can expect, but also recognizing that, you know, the preservation of our tree canopy is a problem that is disconnected from EHO. It's a development problem. It's a by right process problem. It's not an EHO problem.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham, did you have more you wanted to add?
I just wanted to ask the manager, could we, in the July meeting, either in the EHO report or just adjacent to it, come back with a kind of summary for folks about if they see a project being developed, that they have concerns about the trees, where to go and how to enforce, and in particular, if we, whether we have enforced and found any vendors, any professionals to be misrepresenting what the compliance path is after?
I'd be happy to do that. I did want to add two points. I think at this point, they may just be repetitive, which is that, you know, there's another side to this, which is that I hear many times from property owners who want to move ahead with development about what, what a pain in the you-know-what the county is being with our LDA process. And we spend a lot of time and our inspectors are doing a lot of work on that. And there's absolutely a tension in that between what people perceive as by right and what they can get done. The other part of that is, is that some of the people who have expressed interest in building EHOs have gone to builders who frankly do not have the first idea of what's involved in doing that. And some examples, and I know the county attorney didn't touch on this, is also our fire code. There's another part of that. And sometimes developers are coming in and saying, you can build a building this high, and that's not done at the EHO stage. It's done at the follow-on part where we examine those things. And part of that, I think, is borne out by the fact about the number of actual EHO projects that have actually been constructed and come to completion, which as far as I know, there aren't any yet. So, but we'll include that in our report in July.
Thank you. I think the more we could get to a sort of a decision tree that's really clear for people so they know what to expect and when and where to appeal. And so, you know, this is what's decided here. If this, then you go here. I think, and we're working on trying to get that to make it clear, and I think as we've been trying to show, this isn't an issue just with EHOs, it's with all of the construction that we have. And I think the monitoring and enforcement, you know, continues to be a concern. I appreciate the manager bringing up the point that if you are somebody who wants to build, you're really upset with the county because we make it so difficult and so hard and so complex, and this is terrible. And if you don't want something to get built, people feel that the county isn't doing anything to stop things. So we're kind of caught in the middle. We haven't found the perfect spot yet, but we certainly can be a lot clearer, and hopefully by July, we will be getting a lot more close to that. And on your specific issue, Mr. McNamara, I'll be looking into it and go back to you to where it is that you should appeal. And it's not the Board of Zoning Appeals. This tree is at a different point in the process, but I will see what I can do to get you that information. Finally, thank you. So finally, we get to Ms. Fisher, who was here, complaint about the library. She's been complaining about things making it difficult, I think, for patrons in the library. And I believe she is not here anymore. And this is an ongoing issue that we have looked into. I think the librarian has been handling it properly. I don't know, Mr. Carringtonis, does there say anything you'd like to?
Madam Chair, just to state that I had the opportunity to talk with Mrs. Fisher a couple of months ago, three months ago. I received all the materials that she submitted today. I guess I haven't reviewed what she submitted today, but they look very similar. And I escalated that to the libraries and to, to those who were involved with their, the action that was taken against her in the Aurora Highlands Library. And I couldn't find any fault on part of our library system, the personnel of the library system, or the Arlington County Police Department. It's important to state that Ms. Fisher has the opportunity to, and she knows that, to appeal to the Human Rights Commission and bring the problem that she identifies there. And I am going to be continuously observing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Coffey?
I'll just add that, you know, it is really important that people, all residents of Arlington are able to use the libraries as safe spaces. I think, I understand that sometimes folks feel uncomfortable around unhoused people, but that is not a reason to not allow them in our spaces. I think that that is really a thing that we need to work through culturally, because people deserve to have safe, warm, or air-conditioned, we're in the summer now, places to go during the day. And some people don't have other places, and so public spaces are for them. They're for all of us, and I think it is really important to me that we don't look down upon those who are really in a rough place and are struggling and deserve our care and compassion, not, not to be kicked out of perhaps one of the few places that they feel comfortable going.
Yeah. And of course, on the flip side, they need to not, people in the library need to be comfortable using the library. And I know our libraries are well-used, so I think.
If I could add one thing, and maybe the county attorney wants to speak about this.
Yes, thank you.
I'm not speaking about Ms. Fisher specifically, but it is extremely unusual for us to ban an individual from a county facility. And without overstating it, there has to be really almost extraordinary acts on the part of that individual for them to fall into that category.
Thank you for bringing that up. Ms. Cor, did you want to add something?
No, yes, that's true.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes, it's very.
Maybe Madam Chair. Libraries has a elaborate, established policy on how we deal with any conflict and with all, with all people who are visiting the library. They're extremely experienced. They went above and beyond, in my opinion, almost always that I have checked on any complaint. And it is published, so it is easy to find forever.
All right. Thank you. All right. I think we are ready to get onto our consent agenda. All right. Could, Mr. Krishner, have any items been pulled from our consent agenda?
They have. Three items have been removed. Item number 11, Use Permit 23-0059 for Live Entertainment and Dancing at Mr. Day's. Item number 12 is Use Permit 24-0005, a use permit for a private school, Tindale Christian School. And item 13 is three use permits, 24-0007-0008 and -0009 associated with Layley Restaurant.
Thank you so much. All right. Colleagues, could I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda minus items 11, 12, and 13? So moved by Mr. DeFrantes, our second, and seconded by Mr. Carringtonis. Thank you so very much. All in favor of the motion before us, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes 5-0. I don't think there are any opposed. Thank you so very much. For those who are interested in the items that were pulled, they will be heard at our Tuesday carryover meeting, and that will begin at no earlier than 6:30 PM. Folks that are interested in speaking on one or more of these items that were pulled, you can register at the county board's website starting today. And you can also call if you, for some reason, can't access a computer, 228-3130. That's 703-228-3130. And you can ask to speak by phone with our office on one of these items. And I think that brings us to a quick summary of, I'm going to go over the consent items that we adopt on the consent agenda. It's not because they're not important, it's just that they're not particularly controversial. Those who become, that become controversial, as you can see, we pull and then we talk about in the Tuesday meeting. But most of them are not. However they are, I wanted to go over a number of the items that we did pass with the consent agenda, because a number of them, in fact, they're all interesting, but I will go over these. I think there's a little feedback, Mr. Krishner. All right. I think we're good now. Thank you so much. All right. And I think we have some slides here. I'll try to go over things a little bit quickly here. One of the, one of the items I want to talk about is item number three. The board is absolutely committed to finding a new site in the Crystal City to expand library services. However, and we had an agreement with JBG Smith, but due to some site operating and capital budget constraints, where we had planned to put it, this is not going to work out in the previously planned location. So we've decided that's not feasible anymore. So what we have done is taken action to effectively terminate the plant lease that's not going to work out, and then we're entering into another agreement. JBG Smith will make a series of monetary contributions over six years totaling $6.29 million, which will support library operations elsewhere in Crystal City, and we are looking to where that site might be. And then on item number four, we also adopted a site plan amendment for the Key Development Project, for those long-timers here. It formerly known as the Roslin Holiday Inn, gorgeous building that is going up. We are revising the site plan conditions, which is going to transfer the use of vent space up to four times a year from public access of the eighth-floor conference facility at the building to the 36th-floor ballroom. Unlike the eighth floor, the 36th-floor ballroom has unobstructed views of the region to the north, east, and west. We may have a few pictures to show. We did at one point, but I, yeah, there we go. So it's got great view, that's just, a couple of pictures just snapped, a great view from up there, and so that will be available for public access four times a year. When we did this, we also reconfigured some contributions, financial contributions they were making, and that is to allocate more money to go to Roslin Gateway Park renovation and get that off and be, do it as a whole and get it completed much more, more quickly. And that we were taking away, took some money that had been going to transportation improvements, put it into the Gateway Park, and I just want to assure people that we've determined that the money that we moved is not going to affect, impact the planned infrastructure projects at all, and they're going to proceed as planned. Also, we continue our work with Barcroft Apartments Preservation and Renovation. We are renovating buildings 47 and 48 in the apartments. This is not going to change the number of units in the area, but it's going to reconfigure some existing inefficient unit layouts and unused maintenance space, changing the unit mix, adding larger units and more accessible units, which will be good overall. What folks will see, there'll be some exterior facades in the existing buildings that are going to be renovated, replacing old windows, restoring brick, and replacing or repairing roofs as needed and other building repairs, generally just bringing up this very important facility and getting it in better shape and serving more people, which is great. We also did an amendment to our transit fare, and this was just to, it actually decreases the fare, not a whole lot, it's simply from 115 to 110, right? Which is just simply aligns our rates with Womada's rates, the Metro Bus rates, so that they're all kind of the same, which makes it better for regional comprehension of our transportation system. Finally, one of my, another, one of my favorites, we did a memorandum of understanding on the stumbling stone memorial markers. There are three of them right now at the Ball Cellar's house. Those were the first ones. We have approved a memorandum of agreement between the Arlington Board, ourselves, and the Arlington Historical Society. And this is to permit the placement of memorial markers more than in the public right-of-way at locations countywide. And these will, these memorialize the lives of Arlingtonians who were enslaved, and it's intended to help bring the African-American experiences to light, which helps us all confront a difficult history and honor our shared humanity and just understand ourselves where we came from and where we want to go a little better. This is based on, for those that know, the Stolperstein, did I get that right? Stolpersteiner, or stumbling stones. And they are, that's a memorial that exists throughout Germany and Europe, which has been going on for some time. It denotes where victims of the Holocaust lived. And it's really impressive when you are in Germany to be walking around and see them. It just brings the past to life in some ways and helps you understand a little bit where we came from, and even though that past is somewhat problematic. One of the coolest things about this, which is not in my notes, is where actually the students, Arlington County, Arlington Public School students in, helped to create and install these markers. And so it's a real nice intersection with history, local government, and our school system. And I just think it's a great program. We accepted a number of grants. Oddly enough, we have to vote to accept money. It's always a nice thing to do, and I'm going to just zip through those real quickly. We accepted $35,000 from the Virginia Department of Energy to reimburse fleet electric vehicle purchases for our fleet. We accepted $267,000 from the US Department of Energy to support our e-bike rebate and voucher program, which mostly helps low-income and disadvantaged residents. I think I'm just reading from the slide, which everybody can do. I'll try to go pretty quickly. We also accepted $983,000 from the US EPA, which is again supposed to help low-income disadvantaged residents with being more energy efficient. And we accepted $50,000 from the Kaiser Foundation, which is to compensate people with lived experiences of homelessness who are participating in our continuum of care efforts. And then we accepted $356,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Service to support the county's First Episode Psychosis Program, which is really important. We accepted $32,000 from the Virginia Community Crime Control Act, which is going to help training at the county's Juvenile Domestic Relations Court. And finally, $56,000 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. And you know what? Next time, we're going to add all that up and let people know exactly how much it is that we've accepted with our consent items, because it adds up to be quite a significant amount of money to help a lot of important issues. Finally, I want to get to our advertising, request to advertise that we've adopted. We are finally authorized the advertisement of two future public hearings on the readoption of the Pentagon City Planning Study. We already had a public hearing process for this item, adopted it in February 2022. However, the Virginia Court of Appeals ruled that there was a procedural violation in the public notice of the plan, and to remedy this, the plans got to be readopted, requiring the Planning Commission and the county board to hold new public hearings, which we will be doing. The Planning Commission's public hearing will be held on July 8, and the county boards will be at our July meeting. And with that, I think we are ready to get to our regular agenda. And I think we're ready, Mr. Krishner, for you to call the first item.
Yes, of course. One moment, please. All right. Our first item is item number 36, related to the Virginia Health Center at 1800 North Edison Street. Part A is a site plan amendment for site plan number 177 to permit building additions to the Virginia Hospital Center located at 1635 and 1715 North George Mason Drive and 1800 North Edison Street. And Part B is a site plan amendment reviewed to review the status of condition number 66F related to behavioral health services located at 1800 North Edison Street.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schwartz, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With me this morning is Courtney Badger, who will be making the presentation, and also assisting her as needed is Aaron Schreiber and Jane Kim. And Deborah Warren is also available virtually. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Badger. Over to you.
Good morning, board members. I am going to bring up a presentation here, so one second. Okay, great. So once again, I'm Courtney Badger with the Planning Division, and I'll be giving a staff presentation on item 36A and B related to the Virginia Hospital Center. For some background on the site, it is located within the SD zoning district. It's classified as government and community facilities on the general land use plan. And the hospital site is governed by site plan number 177. It's been amended various times throughout the past decades. The latest major site plan amendment was in 2018, when the county board approved the outpatient pavilion building and associated parking garage. Item 36A, that's before you, this morning, is a minor site plan amendment that VHC has requested to expand the emergency department, the cardiac cath lab, critical care unit, central sterile processing, and associated mechanical equipment to support the expansion. The expansion of the emergency department will facilitate room for a comprehensive psychiatric emergency program, also known as a CPAP, and that will have a direct entrance from the parking lot to make it a secure area. And this increases the amount of behavioral health beds and allows for police officers and sheriff deputies to drop off patients instead of having to wait with them in the emergency room, as is the current practice. No landscaping or trees will be impacted by this amendment. However, nine parking spaces are proposed to be removed. The other portion of this item, 36B, is a one-year county board review of condition 66F. In June 2023, the county board approved a modification to condition 66F that changed the condition to require two outpatient behavioral health programs instead of one program, and updated the milestones related to the implementation of these programs. It also required a one-year review as a way to provide a status update of the implementation of the programs. VHC has complied with the milestones outlined in the conditions, and the behavioral health program is operational. The adolescent program is not yet in operation, but is required to be operational prior to the issuance of the sixth-floor CVO for the pavilion building, which has not yet been issued. So pivoting back to the minor site plan amendment, VHC is requesting to expand the hospital by approximately 17,000 square feet. The area of exterior changes is located on the southeast corner of the site, near 16th Street North and North Edison Street. And as a part of the review of the request, county staff analyzed the site plan amendment against zoning ordinance to determine if the request falls within a minor or major amendment category. The zoning ordinance outlines criteria that must be met in order for an application to be considered a major amendment. I'll run quickly through that criteria. First, there would need to be a change in the principal use of the building for more than 5% of the total floor area. There is no change of principal use with this application. There is no change of principal use with this application. The second, the density would need to change by more than five percent. The applicant is requesting a one-point-six percent increase in density. Third, the building height would change by more than twelve feet. There is no increase in the main building height. Fourth, the gross floor area of the first floor would change by more than twenty percent. It's not changing more than three-point-three percent. And finally, there's no change in the site area that they're using to calculate density. Judging the request against these criteria, the application is considered a minor site plan amendment, and thus does not go to Planning Commission or the subcommittees for consideration. So zooming in on the area of requested expansion, this is, this section is what we've been referring to as the corner addition. It includes the expanded emergency room, ICU, cardiac cath lab, mechanical equipment. And then within the parking garage, there's the expansion for the sterile central processing center, and that's internally within the existing parking garage. Taking a look at the elevation view, this is looking north at the southern facade. Just to orient you, this is the emergency department. There's a port cachet right about here where the entrance is. VHC is requesting to expand the, bump out the facade of the current waiting room in order to make more room. It's under the existing overhang that's there currently. And then this is the three-story corner addition, and then the two-story mechanical room to the east, and the penthouse mechanical equipment on top. This is elevation view looking west at the addition, so this is the eastern facade. So again, this is the entrance to the emergency room. This is another look at that mechanical room that's being added. The louvers are matching a pattern for other mechanical areas along this eastern facade. And then just quickly looking at each floor, this is the ground floor addition, so on the left, this is where the sterile processing expansion would happen, it's within the parking garage. And on the right, you can see this is the emergency room expansion and the addition emergency department expansion here. So another view of, on the left, this is the facade of where that bump out would be to increase the emergency room area, and those four parking spaces are the ones that will be impacted. And then this is within the existing parking garage. This is the, they've temporarily expanded the sterile processing center, and they're requesting to make this expansion permanent. This is all interior, no exterior, can't see exteriorly. Moving on to the second floor, they're adding about fifty-five hundred square feet for the cath lab expansion, and then on the third floor, the same size for the ICU critical care center. And then finally, they're proposing a twenty-five hundred square foot mechanical penthouse. So here's a rendering of what the proposal will look like from various angles. So at top is what it currently looks like. On the bottom, this is what it will look like on the left from the southeast corner of the site, and then from North Edison Street, and then from the internal drop-off area. Throughout the review of VHC's proposal, we've engaged with the community, including the Host Civic Association, John M. Langston, and the two adjacent civic associations, Weychoff Woodland and Tara Lee Way Heights. We've also had conversations with Territown H.O.A. Throughout the process, we've emailed the presence of the civic association with all application materials that staff received. All comments that were provided to VHC were also provided to the community. The community requested a document be prepared by staff that had all the conditions for site plan one-seventy-seven in one document. We prepared that, and we also had VHC provide a graphic to show the evolution of the campus. We also had two Microsoft Teams meetings with residents, where we listened to concerns and answered questions. And on the evening of May twenty-second, we hosted a virtual community meeting with community members and VHC to discuss the application. A recording of that meeting is posted on the county webpage. Also wanted to note that as part of the major site plan amendment that was approved in two thousand and eighteen, VHC is required for the life of the site plan to have a community liaison and to host quarterly meetings with their surrounding civic associations. So as mentioned previously, staff compiled all the site plan conditions for site plan one-seventy-seven and had VHC create a corresponding graphic. That was in order to help provide transparency on what's been going on for the site, and we provided that to the community and also posted it on the county's website along with that meeting recording. Throughout the process, we received feedback from the community, particularly general issues with current operations of the hospital, how they're impacting the surrounding neighbors. This ranges from lighting of the new pavilion building to parking in residential streets to noise of the pavilion building and lack of transparency from VHC. This list you see here is not exhaustive, but a lot of the concerns that we heard. We also heard a handful of concerns related to the proposed amendment, concerns about construction workers parking in the residential streets, some concern about the elimination of the nine parking spaces that's being proposed, potential for additional light coming from the added windows, potential noise from the mechanical rooms, and then a desire to have this amendment having considered a major amendment and go through the SPRC process. To help mitigate some of the concerns that we've heard, we added five conditions for this amendment. First, a fairly routine condition that they need to build what is on their plans to make sure it matches. Second, if there's any construction trailers that are needed, they need to be located on-site. Third, construction can only be done during our standard construction hours, and there's a standard that the street surfaces must be maintained to, and any parking for construction workers must be located on-site. Fourth, VHC is required to have a community liaison during construction and to hold a meeting with the community prior to the issuance of any building permits associated with this proposal. And then fifth, the construction site must be maintained to our typical standards. So in conclusion, VHC's site plan amendment is consistent with the intent of site plan one-seventy-seven. The proposed parking is within the allowable range outlined in the conditions. There's no anticipated undue adverse impacts on the community that can't be mitigated by the proposed conditions, and VHC is in compliance with the condition number sixty-six F that was under review. Therefore, staff recommends that you approve the minor site plan amendment with conditions as proposed in the staff report and renew the site plan amendment related to condition sixty-six F with no further county, scheduled county board review. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think that brings us to our applicant. I believe you guys, you gentlemen, have a presentation for us.
We do. If you can hear me, I'm going to start us off.
We can hear you.
Good morning. Nicholas Cummings with Walsh-Kaluchi here on behalf of VHC. I'm with Adrian Stanton and Rich Krumenacher. We're going to walk you through our proposed minor addition to the main campus of the hospital. All of this, as Courtney mentioned, is being done primarily to expand our emergency room capacity and make it easier for us to serve existing patients. I'll note that I have my own anecdote on this to share briefly. I'm appearing remote today because I was admitted to Anova Fairfax on Tuesday night through its ER with appendicitis. I was treated in the hallway until early Wednesday morning, and what I can promise you is excruciating pain. I can tell you this situation is largely the same at VHC and other peer institutions across Northern Virginia, and that expanding ER capacity is absolutely critical in providing proper care to patients. I'll turn it over now to Adrian and Rich, who can walk you through and really explain the medical purpose behind each aspect of this expansion. Thank you.
It's good to see you looking so well nevertheless, Mr. Cummings. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Nick, for the introduction. First, I'd like to say thank you to the county board, county staff, and the county Arlington community for the opportunity to come forward and present this important site plan amendment to expand important healthcare services, as Nick and Courtney both included, these services will include behavioral health care, emergency care, critical care, and also cardiac care.
Having trouble in advancing the slides?
It's advancing on our.
It's above my pay grade. I don't know if Mr. Kushner is able to help you on that.
Maybe within your pay grade, but not my expectation.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. The, this is a picture of the campus from the corner of North George Mason and Nineteenth Street North. And the intent of this slide is to identify the expanded areas to the existing footprint and also to identify the location of the CSP expansion. Then that's done by highlighting in yellow, starting from right to left. On the right actually shows the corner addition, which includes the expansion of the ICU, the cath lab, the emergency department, and also the emergency department, again, containing the CPAP unit, and then the bump out on the front there for the waiting area for the emergency department. And if we shift left where it says the new CSP, CSP is the central sterile processing expansion, that is contained completely within a below-grade garage.
So with each of the floors, as we go through it, Rich and I will tag team. I'm sorry, I should have started first by saying, Chairman and board members, thanks for the opportunity to present. As we go through each of the floors, I'll talk about the critical need, and then Rich will get into the specifics. Before I do that, just an editorial comment. I know circumstances for Mr. Cummings caused him to go to another facility. Had he gone to VHC, he would be here in person.
I was wondering, but I hesitated to say anything.
You go to the closest hospital. It is what it is.
Anyway, as I said, we will try to outline for you the critical need and then get into the specifics. Before I turn it over to Rich, though, I appreciate the lead-in to this program. I would go back a little bit in history and remind the board that the outpatient pavilion, the reason for that was we desperately needed more inpatient services, inpatient beds specifically. And the proposal of that program was to create an outpatient facility, which would allow us to move outpatient services out of the main hospital and create additional space. We are currently going through that process of using that outpatient space. These three critical programs are on the corner of the facility, as you saw, and that's what necessitates this corner addition. And I'll turn it back to Rich.
Actually, if we could just hop back on that previous slide, just to provide a little bit more granular information associated with the project. It is seventeen thousand square feet addition to the existing gross square footage area, but it also includes a fifty-one thousand square foot renovation of the interior spaces associated with the ED, I'm sorry, the emergency department, the ICU, and also the cath lab. It is built entirely on top of an existing structure, so there is no impact to any excavation or any impact to impervious, superpuous surfaces on the campus. And we built up three floors, and the facade, and we have some renderings, and Courtney did show a couple of those earlier, will actually tie into the existing facade, brick, glass, and so on, that'll look very similar to it. And then the, finally, that the, none of the existing landscape or the privacy screening that's currently up there will be impacted as a part of this process, project. Thank you.
We'll start with the expansion of the emergency department. Our emergency department is seeing increased patient volume surpassing sixty-eight thousand visits in two thousand and twenty-three. We're experiencing a rise in the acuity of patients that were being treated, and with the designation as a Level Two Trauma Center, the new space will accommodate the specific requirements for those patients and address the overall crowding concerns, all to further enhance patient care. In addition, it's been mentioned, the space will be essential for the Comprehensive Psychiatric Emergency Program, or CPAP, which offers a specialized care for behavioral health patients in a therapeutic and trauma-informed environment. The CPAP will reduce disruption to the busy ED, providing a secure unit for patients awaiting psychiatric bed placement and minimizing police presence in the behavioral health emergencies. I'll go into the CPAP a little later in our presentation, but I'll turn it back over to Rich for the specifics.
Okay, great. The actual expansion on this level, the ground floor, is about thirty-eight hundred square feet. Twenty-two hundred, twenty-three hundred is attributed to the corner addition component, then about fifteen hundred is contributed to the emergency waiting, department waiting room. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we're also going to be addressing interior renovation. The interior renovation on this floor, which will all be contained to support the expansion of the emergency department, is about twenty-seven thousand square feet. All of this is going to go to allow, to improve our throughput. It's going to increase our overall capacity by forty percent, and the internal circulation is going to help get people in and out quicker, or emitted, depending on what their situation is. And it's also, the intent is to improve the overall customer service. Customer service and customer experience.
Moving on to the floor above, which is where the cardiac cath lab is, as one of only two operating open-heart programs in Northern Virginia, the expansion of our cardiac lab is vital for performing structural heart procedures. As cardiac care evolves towards less invasive interventions, it's critical that we have this additional space to provide that new technology. Addressing the increasing demand for cardiac cath services due to the expanding and aging population is critical for us to maintain the standards we implore for our center of excellence for cardiac care. The corner project ensures that we can meet those future cardiac healthcare needs and provide that needed advanced technology. Rich?
So the actual expansion to this floor will be a total of fifty-five hundred square feet, and there's also going to be an interior renovation of about fourteen thousand square feet. The cath lab today is located, and will stay in the same location. It's adjacent to our cardiovascular services or critical care for, in our pulmonary area services. It's near our cardiovascular operating rooms and also our CV ICU, which is our cardiovascular ICU. The important part of this, being able to provide additional cath labs, is we're also going to be going back to renovate the prep and recovery bays to increase from twelve to get us up to twenty-four, so we have a four-to-one ratio, which allows us to get more throughput and, again, a better customer experience, patient experience, and also quicker to be able to get to the procedures done, prepped, and recovered. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last floor is the floor that houses our critical care unit. As indicated earlier with regard to the cardiac lab expansion, as well as the ED expansion, those patients more than likely are heading to the critical care area of the hospital, and this allows us to expand the critical care component of our current unit. As I said before, aging population and the evolving technology is creating the need for us to expand this, as well as the fact that we are seeing a higher level acuity of the patients coming to the hospital. Rich?
So the overall scope for the ICU expansion, we're actually going from twenty-eight existing ICU beds to forty-five. So we're adding additional seventeen beds, which allows us to be able to address capacity concerns today and also in the future. The actual expansion part is about fifty-five hundred square feet on this floor, and then the interior renovation, we're going to be renovating a portion of the ICU to, which is about eighty-six hundred square feet. And eventually, in the not-so-near future, we'll likely have an interior renovation for the capacity of the rest of the ICU. Thank you.
Bear with me. I just lost my notes. Apologize.
There are good notes up on the screen.
All right. Just a little more details on the CPAP program. It's designed specifically for patients with mental health illness and serves as a starting point for acute mental health care. The unit will help facilitate the principles of the rapid evaluation to ensure individuals in acute distress receive immediate attention and appropriate treatment. The CPAP will operationalize within the ED with an aim to improve patient care, patient satisfaction, and patient outcomes while reducing and eliminating boredom. It will have a dedicated staffing model, which will provide therapeutic care throughout the visit to include social work and peer support. The availability of a psychiatrist and advanced practice providers will provide rapid assessment of each patient to develop an individualized care plan that addresses each patient's unique needs. Implementing a CPAP will allow VHC health to improve continuity of care. It will also serve as a catalyst for community It will also serve as a catalyst for community education and stigma reduction around mental health issues. And as Courtney alluded to, it will eliminate the need for the police and sheriff's office to be in the ED. That concludes my remarks on the CPAP program. I'll turn it back to Rich.
So this slide shows, this is very similar, actually, I think it's the exact same renderings that Courtney had in her slides, but it shows, the top row shows the current state, and then the bottom one shows a rendering of the future state after the addition of the corner addition. Going from the columns left to right, the one on the left closer to the corner is 16th and North Edison Street. The one in the middle is North Edison Street, and then the one on the right is the drop-off area. Again, the top being the current condition and then the bottom being the rendering. Again, the intent, the rendering, the construction will match the existing brick, facade, glass, and so on. And again, just want to stress that none of the landscaping or the privacy wall or anything that is there today will be impacted as a part of this project. Thank you.
The final piece of our request is actually not part of the corner addition. It's over in what is referred to as the 1635 Building, but it involves the improvements to our central sterile processing, so we refer to it in short, CSP. This is a critical operation that supports the surgical operations of the hospital. So this is where all the equipment is sterilized that supports the surgeries that happen every single day throughout the year. As the hospital has grown and as we have seen our surgical procedures increase, both on the inpatient outpatient side of things, the need for the CSP to increase to support those increasing surgeries is imperative. The problem is, the CSP is landlocked. It sits below the ORs, I'm sorry, the operating rooms, so it's a couple floors below that. So the access is easy, but the ability to increase is complicated, given where it's located and it's landlocked. So that's the reason for the need to do that. In addition to the increasing surgeries, obviously, those are impacted by the Level 2 Trauma Center and the increased amount of visits we're seeing in the emergency department.
So the total expansion, excuse me, of the CSP will be 1,500 square feet. Again, this will be enclosed entirely within a below-grade garage, and it's going to expand the footprint of the CSP. The critical component, in addition to what Adrian had mentioned, is it's going to allow us to store more sterile supplies there. Right now, we are at a deficit of being able, the ability to store sterile instruments that are processed through the CSP today. And that concludes our presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Krishnan, I don't believe we have any commissions.
None to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. And I believe we have at least one speaker?
We do. Give me just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Our first speaker is Mr. Mario Woldarsky.
Okay.
Mr. Woldarsky?
Is he here?
I'm not seeing him. Our next speaker would be Mr. Michael Bruce, followed by Mr. Jim O'Shea.
Okay. Mr. Bruce?
Before I start, can I just say, we've been having some technology issues in our neighborhood, which I tried to call in. That's why a few people haven't, Mr. Woldarsky probably in particular couldn't get in.
It says in person, maybe Mr. O'Shea is having some trouble, but go ahead.
But I know, I'm president of Wecroft Woodline Civic Association, having some network issues. That's why I'm dressed not so nicely, because I quickly found out how fast this hearing was going.
We actually don't have a dress code for our meeting.
No, but like, you know, it's just nice.
You're good.
So I'll start off first. I sent everybody on the board a couple days ago. We just got the conditions, the final report from staff. And I'd like to point out first, staff's report, major issue was about behavioral health, which, and we don't have any issues with the issues of expanding medical care, but it's really about the site plan, the site plan process. And the issues, Wecroft Woodline, Tara Lee Way, particularly the diverse community of Halls Hill, Hyvee Park, Tara Townhomes, Tara Manor have been facing. Staff claimed this was about behavioral health, and it's not. It's about the cath lab. Those are two floors. So it's really not about behavioral health, which was one of staff's comments. The other thing is about outreach and integrity. We have quarterly community meetings with VHC. Part of this coming up, the last one was January 10th. We asked VHC about expansion plans. They said there were none, and this came up. So again, we're looking for honesty and integrity in a site plan mandated process that VHC must go through. One of those other site plan mandates is, I'm president of the Civic Association, I'm supposed to have a name, POC, phone number, email address, 24 by 7. I've never been given that, and that's been required since 2018. It used to be Mr. Stanton, it changed. I've never been officially communicated who, when, how. But most importantly, staff, through many of the conditions added, actually changed a major site plan for the tower that was passed in May of 2000. They changed, and we believe that if you're going to change multiple site plan conditions and a site plan that went through a major site planning process, a major site planning process is required. So again, no issue of expanding medical care. It's about the site plan and the conditions about it and the process we've been through to get there. And I'll just go through a number of those items. Number one, we asked staff what major conditions have been changed in the May 2000 site plan. They never answered that question in the May 22 meeting. That's in the package that you have. I learned from a permit inspector, who I would like to keep his name confidential, that there's a condition on signage that was part of Site Plan Condition 42. That has been changed through zoning administrator actions that are non-public, and I can only get if I know they're happening through FOIA. We asked staff to give us that, and they refused as part of the 22 May meeting. So now I'm at a loss to know what is actually in the site plan, what's not, and what conditions we're working with. But going through a lot of the conditions, so again, we have a condition on signage, we have a condition on lighting. One of the things we'd like to see, lighting's been a major contention, TACUS knows about this. We'd like to have window shades put on the windows of the outpatient, of the emergency room that's being extended. We'd also like to see window shades on the pavilion. We have a lot of light pollution, have had a lot of arguments on what is and what is not emergency lighting. The tower site plan actually gives a standard through the Institute of Electrical Engineers. The pavilion site plan does not give a standard, it's opinion. We'd like a standard imposed, and we'd like to have light pollution ended. Now, I'll go through, with a minute left, I was going to say, would like to reconfirm site plan condition 12 on sidewalks, brick, brick block, permeable pavers. We have a major stormwater issue. Roofing, we've asked DES for Lubber Run, has a recommendation that green roofs be provided. We asked about this. VHC refuses to put a green roof on the addition. We have major issues with Lubber Run. In fact, VHC moved Lubber Run as part of its current, prior addition. We need stormwater protection. I got 10 seconds left, but I'd like you to read that document. I'd like you to look at the fact that staff has changed a major site plan. And with that, we need a major site plan that the community can be involved in, and I get more than five minutes, and the hospital got many more in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. And then, has Mr. O'Shea been able to join us?
Yes, our next speaker is Mr. O'Shea, joining virtually.
Okay.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Technology works. I'm going to start in my role as liaison for John and Langston Association and read the letter from the President, Wilma Kilgo. Dear County Board Members, the John and Langston Citizens Association respectfully requests the Board to delay the consideration of VHC Health's proposed site plan amendment. The visions are supposed to be posted on Friday, June 7th, for the community to review. However, staff did not post the information until Wednesday, June 12th, giving the residents of the neighborhoods only three days to review the document. In addition, we are still waiting to receive site plan conditions changed via VHC action with the zoning administrator and not made public. This whole process has been less than transparent. To our community, it feels like county staff is working on behalf of the VHC Health Organization and not in regard to what is best for everyone. There are many other lingering problems with VHC as a result of the construction to the outpatient pavilion and the new parking garage. It surely feels like the hospital will continue to do whatever is necessary to build, add-on, replace, and consistently make changes to its facilities, thus resulting in nonstop construction, parking issues, traffic concerns, mechanical noises, more lighting, trash on private property, increase in ambulances and supply truck deliveries, et cetera, et cetera. Most disturbing is the fact that the county staff has materially changed the site plan via zoning administrator planning or permitting actions. Darren Shriver of Planning will not tell us what conditions VHC has changed via this process. From a community-centric site plan inspector, we have been advised that the prohibition on 1823 square foot of lighted signage and others have been removed via this process. During the one-month delay and considering the applicants' press, we would like for the Board to force county staff to disclose the current plan, quote unquote, to the public without FOIA, so that a public hearing can be held and to return the site plan to what has been approved via board vote and public SRPC meetings. This issue, the issues surrounding residents now faced due to these changes are 24/7, lighted signage, noise from the mechanical equipment, lack of bringing screening to the facility, and no neighborhood traffic calming or site plan traffic studies. Thank you for your consideration of this request. Sincerely, Wilma Jones Kilgo, President, John and Langston Citizens Association. I had a couple of comments as a resident across the street from the construction and impacted. As a resident of Halls Hill, living directly across the street from the garage and pavilion, I have been a liaison for GMLC for the course of the construction. There are well-documented issues involving parking in the neighborhood, unsafe conditions, lighting, noise, and overall negative impacts on our lives and the lives of residents surrounding the construction site. From Ms. Ross, who had replaced looking at a field of trees in front of her front yard, to now looking at a brick wall, to Mr. Woldarsky, who now has a giant traffic sign in front of his house. This has been an impact on our lives and probably underestimated when planning has occurred. Seeing this construction, major construction has been completed, it's been a relief since we can get back to our normal lives just to find out that a new construction has started up. So we need to find out what's coming. I want to reemphasize the need for transparency, need to understand everything that is planned in the community. Delay of this amendment should provide time to compile these plans, present to the community, and try to get more support from the community overall. I'll skip ahead of my comments because I see time. There should be an effort to work with the community to rebuild trust, which is significantly low, obviously, as you can see in the letter. There is much history in this community with the hospital that's bred skepticism, and it is best, in the best interest of all, that VHC Health do everything it can to move away from the past and work towards one of its stated goals in its mission statement, to serve the healthcare needs of the community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Shea. And that's our final speaker.
I believe we do actually have Mr. Woldarsky on the line, if he'll give you just a moment.
Excellent, excellent. Mr. Woldarsky?
Oh, can you hear me?
We can hear you just barely. Can you speak a little louder or closer to the microphone?
My name is Mario Woldarsky. I live directly across the front entrance to the new pavilion building, and as the name will call it, "Hell." I'm asking you to hold any new construction at VHC, especially if it relates to the emergency room and anything that applies to it. It has been, I have called to their attention the high increase in ambulance traffic, and these are numbers from VHC itself. I have taken year 2020, they reported 12,552 trips. I have skipped 21, 22 because of the pandemic. I picked up on 23, and the year 23 is 15,578. That's a slight increase of 3,000 trips. 3,000, that's 24%. Now, the increase we have noticed also relates to the increase of traffic coming from Fairfax, Alexandria, Manassas, Pentebill, Falls Church, McLean, including fire trucks escorting these ambulances. There is also a general transport ambulances that have a generic name on the side, and they are just transport. Now, how much more traffic is VHC bringing to our front doors? Why are we getting this type of traffic suddenly? Now, furthermore, I have taken the fourth quarter of 2023, and I was provided with the number to be 2,960 trips. I was also given the number for the first quarter of '24, that is 5,147, a difference of almost 1,200, 1,200 trips in a quarter, not a year, a quarter. 1,200 over 90 is going to give us, 90 days, is going to give us a lot more than 10, 12 trips a day that we have to put up with. Why is all of this traffic coming to the ER? Why is Alexandria courted with fire trucks? Why is Falls Church, McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Woldarsky. Time has elapsed.
Thank you, Mr. Woldarsky. Appreciate it. All right, and I think that is our final speaker, then.
There are no further speakers, correct.
All right, great. Colleagues, conversation is now with the Board. I think we will go to a motion after a little bit of discussion, so I would like to invite colleagues for questions, comments, and why don't I start with Ms. Cunningham, and then I'll move down? That sounds good. Ms. Cunningham?
I'd like to ask staff to address the concern that there have been changes to the major site plan. Could you clarify that and also provide the answer that the community has requested?
Yeah, I'm happy to start off, and then it bails from staff that wants to chime in. I'm going to share a slide that might be helpful. If it comes up here. So the zoning ordinance allows the zoning administrator the ability to approve minor modifications to site plans and use permits that comply with the spirit of the zoning ordinance and county board approval in the plans for the area through an admin change. So this is done administratively, and on site plan number 177, since 1982, there have been 61 admin changes done. There, 47 of those were prior to the construction of the 2018 pavilion. There, 47 of those were prior to the construction of the 2018 pavilion building. Since the construction of the pavilion building, there have been 14. The majority of the admin changes involve minor changes to landscape, changes for mechanical equipment or related utilities, signage changes, changes to interior use of space, limited changes to facade details. And we are happy to compile all that information and provide that. It does take a quite bit of research and compilation time to do that, and I'll turn to any other staff if they have anything else to add.
Thank you. Mr. Schreiber, do you have anything to add?
Sure. So, for the record, I'm Aaron Schreiber with the Planning Division, and in addition to the information that Ms. Badger presented, I want to get back to the document that was provided to the community about the site plan conditions. The site plan was established in 1980. It has been amended in two significant efforts, one in 2000, which was the tower building, and then the one in 2018, which established the pavilion. So, we affectionate, we refer to those as the tower amendment and the pavilion amendment as was provided to the community. The 2018, each of those site plans, the 2000 and the 2018, they did add new conditions for the site plan, but what's really important, especially for the 2018 amendment, it was very clear that those site plan conditions, except for limited instances, all of the previous conditions still applied. So, those are what are still being enforced by the zoning administrator. And so, the only conditions from 2000 that were superseded by the Board's action in 2018 were conditions 35, 36, 51, and 52. All of that information was provided to the community because that was just a general research that we had been doing on our own. So, we compiled that in a, what we thought was a user-friendly document and provided that, but the conditions have never been changed administratively. We are just working, when the applicant has requested administrative changes, there are allowances for our zoning ordinance, and those are what are reflected by the slide that Ms. Badger has presented. So, we have received a FOIA request from Mr. Bruce this week. We did get a clarification on the request pertaining to a specific condition, which has not been superseded by any of the actions, but we are in the process of compiling that information, and those records are kept by the zoning administrator, and those will be provided once that review is complete.
Thank you. You want to follow up with Ms. Cunningham, and I will?
Yeah, I guess I would just follow up, but I know the historic pieces may take a bit of digging, but I think we all know that while we adore having a Level 2 trauma center close by, it is a challenge that it's located in a residential neighborhood, and so we want to make sure that we are continuing to balance those challenges. Is there any reason that we need to act on this change before at least the 14 changes since the pavilion approval happened could be shared with the community?
I think that's a question for the applicant regarding timeline in terms of what this means for them.
Mr. Stanton, I would assume that would be your?
I guess the question would be, I don't know how to anticipate what that would mean in a?
Right, I think it may be a staff question first of how long would it take to revise this slide a little bit more so it has the 14 items on it with a couple measurements and specifics.
So, you know, that information can be compiled. That is a research effort that is, would be required of our zoning division because, again, the zoning administrator is the keeper of those actions. Could we compile all that information? Sure. I don't think it'll take a month for us to do, but we can, we can provide that information, which are, and if I could just take a moment just to speak about what is an admin change? It is a specific request to, you know, revise something. So, it could be something as innocuous as, can we move this tree, you know, three feet to the left? And as you can see, Courtney here has identified what the majority of those are, landscape changes, some mechanical equipment. So, there have been some changes that I know of where they replaced an air handling unit on a roof, and they put up a different screen wall, and so we're going to see things like that. So, what we would do is we would pull the records that include all of that information, and we can provide that to whomever. It just takes a little bit of time. It will not take a month, and so if it's requested, we will start pulling that information. But the request that we received was specific to a signage-related condition, but we can broaden that upon request to these additional 14 elements.
And if the question, I think Maureen's going to clarify for me, but if the question were not, like, give me this pile with every detail of, you know, the drawing of the HVAC and everything else, but more the, give me the request, you know, the paragraph or two, is that, does that make it faster?
No, it's actually easier just to compile all of the documents because it goes by way of there's an application request, then there's a plan submission, then there's the staff review, and I think you probably, for whoever wants to review it, you get all of that information, and then I would say that that's typically how we would respond to this request, to just provide all of that information rather than just the approval, because I think you lose the context if you're only looking at where the zoning administrator approved it for very specific reasons.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. DeFranti.
Following up on the major site plan, I guess first question is for Mr. Schreiber and then for the, a separate question from the applicant. The earlier slide, we qualify for all of, you know, it looks like all of this is qualified for minor site plan. So, the question for me is, is this application, does it change anything related to the specific conditions that you mentioned, 35, 36, maybe 52, 56? Because if, if you had a, if you had a major site plan application, and then six months later, a year later, two later, you then submitted something else to slightly tweak it, effectively that would be obviating the purpose of the major site plan. But if all of these changes are within conditions that have not been altered, then that would leave me in a place that this is my minor site plan. And so, I don't know whether it's Ms. Badger or Mr. Schreiber, either one, but, you know, have we changed conditions to anything other than the ones changed in 2018?
No, and you can see from the ordinance, it is explicit in stating that the parcel so described shall be used according to the revised site plan, subject to all previously approved conditions and added conditions. So, what we did was we added the new conditions, starting at 70, taking off from where the last set was. And so, with each of these, again, even with the 2018 approval, it was stating all of the previous conditions were still in play, but for very specific ones that were altered in 2018, with this amendment that's being presented to you today, it has no impact on all of the conditions that have already been approved. That's why we added the new ones, to be clear that those are applicable to this new pavilion or this new addition that they're showing in these documents.
Great, thank you. Then the next question is for the applicant. Ms. Cunningham asked, and this does not, this is not dispositive on my judgment, because I think getting to the actual things that are of concern is important in addition to the procedural issues. What is the consequence of waiting one month? I'm aware, whether you call behavioral health or surgery or supplies, whatever the issues are, those are important. That's a public, that's important, but I just want to understand the consequence and get at least an answer to that question.
I'll try to answer this, addressing a couple of issues. One is, just looking from the timing, I'm trying to figure out, well, you all don't meet in August, so does this stretch this?
I think we're thinking July is what we're thinking. I think that's what the question is.
Okay, just sort of clarification. If, if we don't hit July, then we got to wait till September.
Not wait until September, talking about July. That's the question.
I think the other piece of this is, this is a very complex, although it's, as we said, a minor site amendment, it is very complex in the fact that it is around existing services, services that can't stop. So, we have to continue to operate the emergency department through the construction. We have to continue to operate the cardiac cath lab and the critical care areas. So, it's a complex one. So, the reason we're trying to push this forward in June with the ability to move forward is, the sooner we get this going because of how complex, it is going to take a while to finish this project.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I speak really briefly on the?
The conversation's now with the Board. Mr. Karen Tonas.
Thank you, ma'am chair. As a follow-up to Ms. Cunningham's, Mr. DeFranti's line of questioning, first of all, it is a very big facility, a minor site plan of 1.6% addition is 17,000 square feet, so it is really relative to the, to the size and the impact of the building and the facility. So, it's never minor when the original is big, very big and very impactful. So, therefore, I think that the concern in the community, given the not-great experience, right, with the latest addition to the, to the complex, is that, well, 14 approvals, administrative approvals, et cetera, can be perceived as cumulative, right, and that this may be procedurally be important. So, I think transparency here is important. I, first of all, I don't really understand why one would have to be FOIA-ing this information and why this wouldn't be part of, you know, regular scrutiny or regular consideration during the staff's appraisal of the, of the site plan amendment. That's, that's number one. Number two, again, in the interest of transparency, so the letter that Ms. Wilson has sent us, that Mr. Shea has, has read from the Langston Civic Association, was stating that the documents to this were made public on Wednesday, and I can attest to that because I was looking for these. So, it is truly, given the, the public attention to that, the neighborhood's attention to that, and respecting that, this is a little bit short, right? Is there any specific reason why we couldn't publish them earlier?
So, our staff reports are reviewed by many people, and so it was going through that review process and had to get out of the review process before it could be published.
So?
All right. Mr. Karen Tonas, your?
I heard that, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll go back to Mr. DeFranti and then get to Ms. Coffee. Yes, Mr. DeFranti.
I'll just note that I think that's a reasonable thing, and there's different components. There's county manager staff, there's county attorney staff, and I don't think, I don't have a need to identify with relief, but that is, at this moment, but that is a question, right? That was a, that was a very diplomatic answer, and I'm not asking for an answer, I'm just going to note that, you know, we cannot pinpoint who the, if the, if the challenge was the applicant, I want to know that, but if the challenge was not the applicant and its staff of some type, that does weigh on me a little bit in this consideration, not to say that the site plan, and not to say you got to name names, I'm just, you gave the right answer. I hope it's okay that I would note that we have to be a little accountable on the Board side, so, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Coffee.
Thank you. So, without, without adjudicating whether things have or have not happened, if there have been deviations from the referenced site plan conditions and there have not been changes to those site plan conditions, would we say that those deviations would be attributable to a lack of adherence to those conditions?
So, I can feel that one. I, I don't think that the administrative change process undermines the approval of the condition. Our ordinance is very specific in that it establishes, from an amendment perspective on a site plan, what is a major amendment, what is a minor amendment, and what can be approved administratively. And a typical administrative change application is because there is some level of flexibility provided in the condition, or there is a need to interpret what the Board's approved condition says or allows, or if they're replacing things in kind, but maybe a tree species isn't available, that color of brick, they just couldn't match it right, things of that nature. I don't believe that it's a significant deviation because if it was a significant deviation from the condition or the intent of the Board's approval, we should not be approving those administrative changes, and those do happen. I mean, there are multiple instances where an applicant applies for an administrative change, and we do not think that it meets the spirit of the approval or that it is not in compliance with the condition, and we recommend denial, and that's why this Board sees a lot of site plan amendments, is because we have denied administrative changes. From the quick research that Ms. Badger did, that she provided in that slide, those 14 or administrative changes that were approved since 2018 appear, and we have not pulled all of the documents and looked at those, but those appear to be related to things such as landscaping or some type of, you know, maybe the placement of a construction trailer. We will pull all that information and take a look at those and see what it is, but I don't believe that an administrative change application approves a deviation from the condition or supersedes a condition because that is not what our allowance is, and I don't believe the zoning administrator has that authority to approve an administrative change that would explicitly do that.
Yeah, I think more what I was getting at is if there are things that have happened outside of those administrative changes, that that would be indicative of, on the property, not adhering to the conditions that exist, if that is happening. Not saying it is or is not, but.
Absolutely, and then those would be subject to, you know, zoning enforcement action regarding, you know, forcing compliance with that.
Gotcha, thank you. And so, I think there are a lot of things that have been, you know, this is a minor site plan amendment for a specific addition to the property. There's a lot of things that have been highlighted that seem to be problems with the existing adherence to the site plan. This is not the process to go about correcting or addressing that, but could you enlighten me on what the correct process would be if, if this Board wanted to take some of those issues up?
So, obviously, there, as Ms. Badger noted, there is a requirement, and Mr. Bruce alluded to this as well, is that there are requirements for quarterly meetings between the applicant and the community, and I understand that sometimes those are not as beneficial, they are limited in scope, agendas are established beforehand, and staff is not a party to those communications. I would hope that those would be a good forum for helping to repair some of those relationships, but we understand that there are some challenges, and that's something that hopefully can improve over time. But again, in terms of, you know, compliance with those things, anytime we, a matter of noncompliance is made known to the zoning administrator, her enforcement staff is available to investigate, and then typically, the investigation goes by visiting the site, observing the situation at hand, providing a verbal warning to the, to the developer, not developer, but the, in this case, the operator, and they have a period of time to cure that or else a violation is issued against them, and then again, they have a period of time to cure that or else they proceed with further enforcement actions. So, that is our typical process. We do, I know that Ms. Vom has a very talented inspector who spends a good amount of his time on this property, and he has a close working relationship, we understand, with the community as well as the developer, to help facilitate, you know, resolution to any issues that evolve. We are not aware of any currently pending violations against the property, but we are also aware that they are still working through completion of some matters related with the 2018 approval before they get that master certificate of occupants permit. And so, you know, Mr. Smith is still working diligently to help resolve any issues, but again, we are not aware of any, but that is a typical process in terms of a community complaint, an investigation, whether that warrants further violations is all based upon what is observed.
Thank you. And for the applicants, our neighborhood associations have identified that they are not sure of the correct point of contact to work with you all. Can you identify that point of contact today?
Yeah, we will identify that point of contact as, during normal business hours or normal construction hours will be Ramon Ator, who's going to be the project manager for the corner addition project, and then we are also going to have a number that can call after hours because I don't, it wouldn't be reasonable for somebody to be able to answer the phone at 3:00 in the morning, which will be staff 24/7, and if it is an emergency, there'll be an escalation where it could go to that individual or other individuals to them. And we also have a, an email address dedicated specifically to the community.
And so for, do you know for this specific addition, what the estimated duration of construction might be?
So it is going to be a phased construction project. So there's going to be, inside this larger project, there's up to 15 phases, several different phases on each floor. So we're looking for, the start of building permit being issued to completion, we're about 18 to 24 months.
Wow, okay. And how confident are you that you can adhere to all of the conditions that our planning staff have put together during this 18-plus months of construction?
Yeah, we are confident, we are confident that we can adhere to those.
Okay, thank you. And then back to staff, what are the steps between this minor site plan amendment and the actual initiation of construction?
So, I mean, I can speak to that. I mean, again, since there is no increased impervious area, there's no land disturbance, this is going to involve building permits. So they will be submitting, after, whenever the site, if the site plan is approved, they will start submitting those building permits that would undergo administrative review before those get issued, and then they would be able to start work. But again, since there is no land disturbance, there would be no additional, you know, Chesapeake Bay requirements, things of that nature. So it's a little bit quicker than what you may see on some other site plan amendments because they are building on top of existing buildings and infrastructure.
All right, thank you. That's my last question.
Yeah. I had just a couple of questions on the, one really on the minor-major issue. Can you put up the slide that has that list of what, I think it had landscaping and signage, and if you could put that up, please? And really, my question was, all of these issues probably depends on what the exact issue was. It's not that one.
The admin change slide?
Yeah, I think maybe it's the admin one, yeah. So signage, for example, so there's signs and there's signs, right? There's little signs, and then there's really big signs. Is there a kind of cutoff on when this is just admin and when this has to come to us? I'm guessing there is, and actually, on all of these, because again, these changes could be so minor you don't even notice them, or they could be absolutely huge. And I'm assuming somewhere in there, you would have to come back to the board. Can you kind of delineate that a little bit? What's the difference between admin and having to come to the board?
We have all...
Oh, and Mr. Cummings, thank you. Mr. Cummings, his hand is up, and people have noticed that. I'm happy to ask Mr. Cummings if he'd like to say something, and then I'll get back to staff on the answer on this one. Mr. Cummings, you there?
I am, and I apologize for trying to interrupt earlier. I wanted to say, on the admin change issue generally, that I am the one who's filed every one of these since 2018. And I'm happy to give any context, if I can, on what I've submitted and what was approved. They were all related to the construction of the outpatient pavilion, and doing various adjustments that were permitted by the existing site plan conditions for the outpatient pavilion, or interpretation of existing condition language, as Aaron noted, in order to get that building built. We have one admin change pending right now that relates to the timing of the issuance of various certificates of occupancy, et cetera, as we continue to complete some punch list items for finishing out the outpatient pavilion's landscaping and associated infrastructure. But that's really what we're doing through administrative change. I'll let staff continue to answer here on signage, but again, I'm available here to speak on those admin changes. I'm not sure what we would really learn from waiting, you know, another month on the community getting evidence of those admin changes, because they really just have nothing to do with this application. Fully understand the need for transparency. I really wish that it was easier to find some of these admin changes on the internet myself, for my own legal research purposes. So I'm with them on that aspect. I'll yield now.
Thank you. Now I'll go back to staff to my question, sort of what's the cutoff? Because I'm sure there is one, when you have to come to us and when you don't.
Sure. So it's always going to be based upon if there's a specific level in the condition. So let me, for example, there is a, and this is something that we're looking into based upon this request by Mr. Bruce regarding specifically condition number 42 that was approved with a site plan in 2000 that applies to the, again, the tower building. And that condition does state a specific amount of square footage for signage for that building. If they had submitted, if there was an administrative change that was submitted to request sign that exceeded that amount, then we would be recommending denial unless there was some other condition that would override that. I'm not aware of that, but that is something that we are taking a look at. But that, again, is a common element, or theme of why an admin change might be denied, because they are asking for something that exceeds a specific parameter set forth by the condition, whether that's a timing issue, whether that's a width, or a height, or something. And so again, what we're doing with administrative changes are, we are specifically looking at, is the request within the boundary set by that condition and within the spirit of the condition? When they are not, and I'll give you an example of one, earlier this morning, the board approved on consent, a site plan amendment for the inclusion of a 400-square-foot mezzanine. That was, that 400-square-foot mezzanine was discovered during the building permit process, to which time we couldn't issue the building permit, and they were required to go through a site plan amendment because the condition specified a very, an absolute amount of gross floor area. That mezzanine exceeded it. So even if they had asked for an administrative change, we would have denied it and told them they have to apply by the site plan, through a site plan amendment. Unfortunately, they skipped that process, went straight to building permit, and then had to stop and go through the site plan amendment. So again, there are parameters, and we are looking within that to see if the change is not minor, but is within the spirit. And typically, they're related to facade changes, landscape changes, some timing elements. I think that that's what the majority of these are, but again, we haven't researched all of them, other than pulling the data of looking at the number of them. But we are happy to pull the remainers, remainders and provide them.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to go back probably about eight or nine months to a conversation we had at the end of last year, and also when we had one at the beginning of this year. And the focus, this is going to get to the point, just bear with me.
I'm sure it will.
On commercial market resiliency. One of the things we had talked about was taking a look at the definition of major and minor. And one of the things I said at the time, given that there's a large number of instances where we interact with the developer or the community, that if we were to change the definition in any way, one thing we had to do was to have a full set of information available that would talk about what those minor changes were, for the public to be able to see on an ongoing basis. And I think I said at the time, we haven't done that in the past, and I'm uncomfortable with the fact that that's not immediately available to the public to see what the admin changes are. So I don't want anyone to think somehow that we're resistant to doing that, but there are thousands of these admin changes. So I committed in that process to moving ahead with a way to make that available. We've heard a lot about transparency. I want to be clear with people, this is not a question of us hiding information. There's a lot of work involved in making that available. This conversation today, I think, would be very different if we had succeeded in making progress on that. We need to make a lot of progress on that. I can't tell you how much time is involved in doing that, but I think absolutely this conversation should be informed by what those admin changes are. Okay? So I think that by itself is a significant issue. And if the direction from the board is, get your admin changes up on the web so people can see them, I want to let you know that we're going to do that. I can't tell you the time involved with that. As to the 14 here, absolutely, we can get that done quickly. But I just, I did want to note that that process focusing on the admin changes, and this is neither here, this is neither for or against the current application, has to do with things that are in existing site plan conditions, okay? And it's up to the board to determine whether any of the back and forth on existing site plan conditions is related to the current application in front of you. So some people will say they're unrelated, you may feel that they are related. But I wanted to let you know that even if we had published all that information on the administrative changes, which we should, that still leaves you the question about the current applicant and those requests. Those don't involve any of the administrative changes at issue. So I think, I'm stating something I think that you know, but I'm always uncomfortable with the idea that somehow we're hiding the information, and I wanted to let people know that we're committed to getting it out there, and I feel uncomfortable saying that we don't have the 14 available. We do, but we don't have them today.
Yeah, thank you. No, and that's very helpful. And then I just want to confirm, people who are probably listening to this, the whole issue, as I understand it, is technology and antiquated systems that are databases that are not searchable, and some things have to be done manually, which in this day and age, people kind of can't imagine, because you just push buttons and Amazon knows what you bought, like, you know, years ago, and can tell you all of this information. Government is not at that point, for a lot of good and not-so-good reasons, and we are trying to fix it. But it really is a technological issue that we've got, I assume, and a time issue. Is that correct, Mr. Schwartz?
It's, yeah, the technology, I don't want people to think somehow we don't have technology that can retrieve information and get it, but a lot of this is material, if you go back in 2005, there was a report done on this. I mean, this has been an issue for a while. I don't want to overstate the number of records, maybe Aaron or Courtney can do a better job of explaining, but there are literally thousands of these. Okay? And so we, and I can't say that we've kept them in perfect order, they date back to the beginning of site plan number one.
The beginning of time.
Yeah, the beginning of time. But that's not an excuse in this specific case, but I wanted to let people know we're committed to getting those online.
Thank you. And then I'll just remind people, part of the reason we have minor, we have administrative things, is just simply so that we don't have to bring those thousands and thousands of items to board meetings, because we'd never finish a board meeting if we had to, if we had to do all of that. Thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Karen Tonas, your light is on. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, just a remark on that. I fully appreciate the fact that this is administratively difficult, but there are thousands of minor, et cetera. But this is about, less about the available technology or the available, it's about the sensitivity that we show when something really affects a community that has generated significant amounts of input from the public. And this is also a major, major place, the hospital. It is incredibly important for us. I mean, this is an important facility for this community. People's lives literally depend on a well-working facility there. So we want to go an extra mile to make that as transparent as possible and, you know, mitigate the fact that it is, as Ms. Cunningham correctly pointed out, it is in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and this creates a lot of friction. So we should be a little bit, in my opinion, more targeted in our sensitivity, especially given the record and the recent, you know, issues with the, with expansion of the hospital. That's what I was after, right? To be proactively, when we know that we have something that we have to be more responsive to.
Thank you. Back to Ms. Cunningham, did you have, then I'll go to Mr. DeFranti.
I was just going to clarify on the question of the admin changes. Mr. Manager, would it be possible in July, or some other date that you set, to come back to us with a estimate of the cost and timing to either do a, you know, just-in-time as each site plan amendment comes forward, double-check and then catch up then, or do a full study?
Well, what I will come back, and I'll let you know what the issues are involved and what the trade-offs are. I don't, actually don't have the number handy, but we can have a discussion about that, absolutely.
Yeah, I assume there's some cost and some significant time involved, but it'd be great to have that conversation. And then, if I may, ask Mr. Cummings, if one were to, if your client were to ask you to put together a summary of the 14 that have been asked for, would that be an easy thing for you to do, since you filed them?
Absolutely. And I was going to offer that earlier. I could do that, I could provide records of them, I could do all kinds of things. We are, of course, likely going to charge Virginia Hospital Center for that time. So that is up to ultimately Adrian and Rich to decide to let us go ahead and do that. But we could do that, we could do it, we could provide it by Tuesday, we could come back to you on Tuesday if you want to hear us again then. We'll do whatever we can to help advance the ball on this and get this construction started as soon as possible so that we can help serve patients and have fewer people like me suffering in the hallway.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. DeFranti.
Thank you. A couple of quick questions, I think on behavioral health. The Civic Association mentioned that question concern. There's some storage that we're doing, there's some addition, that is a result of the project. And then there's some additional beds that are going to be the result. Some of those beds will serve not on behavioral health, but I do think, at least, help me understand how this benefits on behavioral health, because we have sheriff deputies in the room, and it may not exclusively benefit, but if you could just sort of briefly describe the behavioral health benefit, at least I think there could be one. And if there's not, that's okay too, but I just want to understand that question.
So specific to behavioral health, that really exists in expansion related to the emergency department. So that's where the CPAP program will be. We currently do not have anything like that. In fact, there's not much like that in the state of Virginia, there's only two other programs. And we've gotten approval from the state to be able to do that CPAP program in our emergency department.
Great. So the next question is, January 10th, Civic Association mentioned, no reference in that meeting to expansion plans. And that's, it's not a, it's again, not dispositive for me on deciding this, if there weren't mention of expansion plans on January 10th, but it would be helpful to understand if you knew that you were going to expand in a minor way, but did not see it as sufficient to raise on January 10th, or if these plans kind of came together subsequent to January 10th.
I was not at the January 10th meeting, so I can't say that I know specifics. But just as it relates to that, because I am part of the executive team, I can tell you that there is a lot of things that we discuss as it relates to what I'll call the backfiller, related to the outpatient pavilion. There's a lot of moving parts. At January 10th, although the concepts of needing to expand the emergency department were part of our plans, we didn't have a formal project like we're calling it now, corner addition.
Okay. Is there anything, Rich, that you want to add?
Yeah, if I may add.
Thank you, Mr. Tim.
We do have quarterly meetings, and the next quarterly meeting after January 10th was April 1st, or the first week of April. And we did share that, the intent to, for the minor site plan amendment submission. We did have a special meeting, two weeks ahead of this meeting, or one week. I don't know the exact date. Where we had it was specifically with the presidents of the local association, civic associations. We did have one folks, one person attended, but it was to give them, it was a couple days prior to actually submitting the minor site plan amendment, because we wanted to give a heads up about that.
Great. For my part, for me, the biggest issue is, I do want to publish the 14th. Mr. Bruce, you may have my vote, but if you keep behaving that way, you might not.
I know, but I'm...
Okay? So the next question is, construction worker parking, because that was a significant struggle on the prior stuff. There is a site plan condition on construction worker parking. There are two issues that I'm interested in trying to figure out, keeping in mind the drafting of the construction worker parking condition, which says, not all of the details of this will be determined until the zoning administrator, I think, works this out. So those are, my instinct, this is for staff, and this is just to get back to me, my instinct is that we don't typically do a lot of enforcement in the surrounding blocks to the Virginia Hospital Center. We don't do a ton in the Clarendon Courthouse. There's statistics, it's a public matter. And I'm not saying this is anyone's fault, we have to hire the people, but, to do this. But maybe for Mr. Schwartz, I don't know who, it's, the question is, do you know if we have a regular rotation to send people up there to ticket folks? Because I drove through at 6:50 like a ton of times, never saw this, and I do believe, Mr. O'Shea, that there's, that not, no one's fault, just that we don't typically do this. And I could be wrong, but coach me on that question, that's the county side of it.
Yeah, the question about enforcement, and I think the board, we actually had a short conversation about this with the adoption of the fiscal 25 budget. We've added additional staff to our parking enforcement. Just want to be clear to everybody, because it's this, I've made it clear myself, that drives me to distraction. We cannot be everywhere at once. And what we do is, we are reactive, we're still in a reactive stage about doing enforcement. We have some proactive enforcement, some in the corridors and some in the neighborhoods. But it is, if people think we're going to be there every day checking, that is unfortunate. We're looking at some technological solutions to that, and might advance it, but I'm not going to sit here and say we're able to do that. If people call us, and we encourage them to call the non-emergency police number, we will send staff out that, if they are available, to go and look at that. And sometimes, when we get there, the violation has passed. That is just a challenge.
Sure, that's super helpful. And then I'll just... Sure, that's super helpful. And then I'll just say to VHC, on construction worker, sort of similar to Mr. Schwartz's comments, I don't think we're going to be able to, like, every single time there's a 10-minute, you know, if you're sitting by your window, waiting to see a white van, and immediately want to call, that is a level of anxiety that leads to a level of enforcement that I don't believe is the best way to live. It's like waiting for your mail every day. You need to have something, you know, and you need to think in addition. But the construction worker parking over the 18 months is the reason that I am supportive of a 30-day deferral. I do think this is a minor site plan. I could not envision a scenario under which I would delay beyond July. And I do know there's a public good in finishing this work. I didn't come to this meeting thinking I would be for deferral, but there was a meeting on May 22nd. There's a host of other issues. I was pleased to have a conversation about this before May 22nd. There are non-minor site plan issues that lead me to enough procedural concerns that that's why I would support a 30-day deferral.
Thank you. So your chair is not too happy about the idea of a 30-day deferral. I don't, I may be in the minority, in part because we've heard a lot of complaints and concerns that don't seem to actually have to do with the item before us. I think when we get to July, we're going to pass it. I think there are a lot of issues that need to be dealt with, and I'd like to maybe talk about those outside of this and see about being able to do that. This quarterly meeting doesn't seem to be actually working. And I don't know where my colleagues are going to be. I will let everyone know, July is looking busier and busier, and I'm not sure it's worth our time, the community's time, and staff time to put it off. I understand the desire to do that. Again, I don't think it's really because of the issues specific to this item. I'm convinced that things that were administrative are administrative, things that are minor are minor. I mean, I just, this just does not, to me, rise to the level of, you know, like the tower and things like that. And again, I just think it's not the best use of any of our time. However, and I'd like to have discussion, if we can manage to pass this, I would like to have some discussion and maybe put some direction in on trying to solve a little bit some of these issues that seem to just be festering and festering, and seeing if we can kind of deal with those with the hospital. And I haven't even mentioned the whole parking issue, and how expensive the parking garage is, and our employees parking there. I would really like a whole summary about what's happening with that. I think perhaps the hospital could be a better partner with the community and those they serve on the expense of parking at the hospital. But with that, I'm going to, I'm only one vote. I may be chair, but I'm only one vote. But I really would like us to pass this. But again, I would like some discussion and to continue the major issues that are festering, that do need to be dealt with, but I don't think are, you know, would be solved by pausing this. I think it would just cause more time and issue and aggravation that I don't think we need, because I think we have that with other issues. But again, I'm just one person. Mr. Kertonis, your light is on.
Yes, Madam Chair, my light is on. I mean, it's not a secret that, and we received actually an official request for a deferral from the Langston Civic Association. And I am supportive, too. Could be moving it, or second emotion to defer to June. There are two things here. One is, I do believe that there is a lack of trust that is only manageable and need to be compensated with an extra effort by VHC to commit to a, to a meeting without an agenda, without the, this very, very structured and scripted environment that I've been in a few meetings, which have been helpful to a certain degree, but they haven't really dealt with the, you know, with the cumulative effect of so much, so many problems during the last site plan. And we're here today, and that was a little bit surprising to me, that is another, almost two year, one year and a half to two-year project, right? So, and I learned to Mr. DeFranti's comments on workers, parking issues, that hospitals are very complex operations. They need a lot of contractors. They have a lot of work that needs to be done. Therefore, they attract a lot of traffic, and it's, and they're complex projects to pull off. And I do think that we need to have assurances that we are not going to prolong the, as much as possible, humanly possible, to prolong the pressure and the stress that the immediate neighborhood has, has been suffering. We need to be responsive to that and sensitive to that. And if 30 days, and I hear you, Madam Chair, and I respect you in your assessment, that we don't see material issues here for this, except for a few, like, for example, publishing, for me, publishing this kind of document too late is a material issue, not a dispositive, as Mr. DeFranti would say, but it is a material issue. So I would welcome these, their questions to defer it for 30 days, and A, find a way to comply with all the information that was requested today, B, have a decent, open-agenda meeting with the affected communities, and C, you know, find a way to appreciate actually the contribution of the hospital to healthcare here in Arlington as well. Put this into perspective and frame it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coffey.
Yeah, I think it's always a little bit difficult when you have something like a hospital, which is a deep and necessary community need, and then also the feeling of not having been a super great or cooperative neighbor. And it's tough to figure out the path for, like, no one doesn't want psychiatric help and to expand and better emergency room capacity and all of that. And also, we would like adherence to our site plan conditions. We would like the neighborhood to have the opportunity to feel genuinely heard and to see issues resolved after they bring them up. And so I think I'm struggling a little bit in terms of what the appropriate path forward is. I am, I am open to a deferral. I'm not dedicated to it. I think, you know, I think there are, as our chair said, there are a lot of issues here that are outside of this actual site plan amendment, but it's really hard to separate them when that trust has been broken, because other conditions have been violated. And so, you know, I ask, do you have 100% confidence that you can adhere to these? You say yes, but we have history of perhaps that not happening. And so, what does it all mean? You know, how does it all come together? I mostly say that to illustrate kind of, I'm, you know, I'm open to, Mr. Cummings suggested Tuesday. I'm not sure if that's possible or doable. Obviously, there are very few days between now and Tuesday. I'm open to July. I don't know kind of where the sense of the board is at this point, nor do I really know what's possible. And so I think maybe some discussion around that might be useful.
Thank you. That's exactly where I'm going. I actually know where the sense of the board is. I think we do. I think your chair is minority. But I do want to give our staff an opportunity, all right, so you can see where things are heading. What happens if we put this off until, I think Tuesday is probably unreasonable. I think we would be looking at July. Although if you all think you can do Tuesday.
No, we're, we're fine with July. I mean, if I said Tuesday and we weren't able to pull everything together, then that would be not a good use of our time.
Exactly. All right, thank you. All right. Ms. Cunningham, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. I move that the county board defer consideration of item 36 until July at a date to be noticed and confirmed.
Thank you. Motion has been moved. And second, and do you want to speak to your motion?
Sure, I would love to. I, as I said, you know, having a Level 2 trauma center in the middle of our community is beloved and appreciated, and being very right up against a residential community is tough for everyone. So I really, in addition to all the procedural items here that we flagged and will try to get better at, I really implore the applicant to look back at the last couple of years and make sure we have learned every lesson and adjusted every, yeah, personality or tone, or, I know, I know you had mentioned that the contractor on the pavilion did not hit it out of the park on community engagement and other items, and that that has been a consideration, will be a consideration going forward. But I think the need to repair and to really engage here is evident. Maybe it's more than quarterly meetings for a little bit, you know, maybe there's some monthly suppers, or walks, or yoga, or whatever it is. But I think we should spend some time repairing that, because we're going to be neighbors for a long time, and getting that as right as possible is really crucial. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to check with our attorney, the motion that's on the table. Do we need to at least say it's item 36 or anything? Is that clear enough, what?
I thought I heard that.
I did, yeah. Excuse me. Okay, good. Excellent. So it says, it just says, what's up here? All right.
And I think the intent is to leave it open, that if, if we think it can be faster than our actual July meeting, we are meeting a lot between now and then for other things. And with the proper notice of two weeks, we could schedule a special meeting to get you through faster if it's ready.
In that case, I think you might want to amend your motion. Would you like to say that you moved that the county board defer item 36? I think we might as well just be specific. For consideration, at a board meeting, the exact date of which will, and not even put in July, just leave that open. Is that all right?
Sure.
So I think the chair is asking to put item 36 in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our attorney hasn't said it needs to be there, but it's just old habits on my part. Okay.
We just had a difference between what's on here and what was said.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Moving fast.
Moving fast, yeah. No, that's fine. Consideration at a board meeting in July, I think that's probably fine. At a board meeting, we probably won't do it in June, I guess. All right.
I think if we were to do it in June, it would have to be Tuesday, which would not require notice.
Which is, yeah.
But otherwise, it would require more notice than June has time.
All right. Even though the chair's not going to vote for this, she's okay with it. All right. Any more comments on this? I think, seeing as it is going to be coming back to us, I think we need to probably keep moving. Anything more, Mr. Kertonis?
Madam Chair, I want, just to reiterate, I think, I think that the open-agenda meeting with communities initiated by VHC, by VHC leadership, would be a great step forward in restoring trust. I really appeal to the leadership of VHC to seek that in this period. And I do believe that it will be productive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add, I think, I think you've heard it pretty much from everyone up here. The goal of this deferral is to see how far we can get on rebuilding trust, or at least creating a pathway where that can occur. And so I hope, you know, I hope we all, both our neighborhoods, as well as the applicant, take that very seriously and put genuine effort into that effort, and come back and hopefully, maybe we'll have some relationships and some progress to show for it.
Thank you, Mr. DeFranti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your perspective and point. We do need to be responsible about, I believe, about public dialogue. And the big picture is the minor site plan, I think, is, is the appropriate step. And it's just, it's a construction worker. It's follow-up to the May 22 meeting, which I think I flagged in a conversation about a month back. And then it's, the last point I would make is that we need to, I personally do not believe that we need to meet more than quarterly. I think we need to focus on the five to six punch list items that are out there that we can work on. VHC has invested significantly in addressing the noise issue. That's on the other side. The stormwater issue seems like the one of the others. Those are not in the site plan. It's the construction worker that leads me to this point, along with some of the procedural concerns. But I'd ask for grace. This is, in some senses, a risk, in that we need to move beyond, you know, just try to be a little graceful with each other, while not enabling, you know, gotcha. And that's from staff, for us, from staff, applicant, and from our community. We want to serve you as well as we can. Not everything is going to be easy and perfect. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Cunningham.
Oh, sorry. It's a bit of a residual, but because we spent so much time on some of the procedural things, I do just want to highlight the stormwater and kind of climate balance. I think every project coming before us right now has this, you know, we need to develop and build versus we need to manage our climate. And working to get that as an "and" instead of a "versus" is really important to all of us. So whether it's permeable pavers or green roofs, or shading, or whatever, just making sure in all of your projects and operations, we're doing what we can to manage the heat, manage the stormwater, and improve the biophilic design for our community so that we have healthier people. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're about to do a vote. I think the chair is going to lose. It's fine. I'm not feeling that strongly about it. I do think when it comes back, it will pass. I think it's a great project, really needs to be done. I think the issues that we're dealing with have been, since the inception of the hospital, I think, Mr. Stan, as you know that, it goes back way, way, way back, and it just hasn't, it's gotten, I think, somewhat better, not better enough. I appreciate Ms. Coffey saying we can at least maybe get started on better relations. It's not going to get solved in the next bit. It's possible we even want to have some kind of facilitated discussion, because it really feels like there needs to be a bit of an intervention between the hospital and the community. The hospital is absolutely crucial to Arlington, absolutely crucial, and provides a wonderful service. But it's got to be a good neighbor, and I think that can be improved, and hopefully, we can make, get on a little bit of better, better path in the next short while, before it comes back to us at a date to be determined, but it will be soon. All right, all in favor of the motion before us, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say, all opposed, say no. No? All right, motion passes 4-0, and this will be heard.
4-1.
4-1, oops. Just feeling irrelevant here. It's fine, 4-1, thank you. And this will come back to us. All right, I think we can move on.
Can, I'm sorry, this may be out of order.
Yes, Mr. Stan.
Can I get a clarification on this? The hospital is absolutely willing to meet, will include our CEO. He's committed to that. I just want to be clear, because this would involve not only participation by the hospital, but the community. Is it the board's, I guess, request that we have this meeting before we come back to you in July? Because that, that, given it's the summer vacations, that's a tight window to try to, we're committed to doing it, but it's going to be, it's going to be a commitment by everybody.
All right. I don't think the board has decided on that. I don't know, I want to call for a vote on it. I think as soon as possible, perhaps, if you can't hold exactly the perfect meeting that you think should be held, something preliminary could be done, or at least a plan. And I think it'll be important to have that in place before you come back to us again, and we can certainly discuss that in the next, in the few, next few days.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, absolutely. All right.
Seems to want to keep.
Yeah, but I don't want to do that right now. Thank you. All right. I think we're ready to move on? Okay. Mr. Kushner, next item, please.
Of course, our next item, item number 37, is the 2024 Arlington County Solid Waste Management Plan and Zero Waste Plan.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With me, I'm going to talk slowly, so Doug can plug in his laptop. With me today is Doug Kreidemeyer and Eric Robowski, to make the presentation on the item 37, which is the Solid Waste Management Plan.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Kreidemeyer, are you ready? More the point, is your, is your computer ready?
My computer is ready. So as I share this, as Mr. Schwartz said, we are here to review the Solid Waste Management Plan. The presentation that I'm pulling up is not any different than what we had shared with the board at last month's RTA. But I will go through it, just so it is fresh in everyone's mind, and as we can continue that dialogue. So, again, just touching on a few things, looking at the background and the purpose, looking at the goals and initiatives of the new plan or proposed plan, and then reviewing the initiatives in the public engagement summary. So we were, staff was assisted by the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and they were very accommodating with the amount of time that they put forward to this effort in reaching a compromise plan. And so I would like to thank them at this point for all of the time that they did provide to this process. The process has taken place over the last two years, kicking off in February of 2020. The process has taken place over the last two years, kicking off in February of 22. And at various times throughout the past two years, we have engaged the public to be able to bring this plan to you. And so the plan really serves two purposes. It's to meet the state mandated requirements and regulatory requirements from Virginia DEQ, which is the solid waste management plan aspect of it. And then the second is to fulfill the county board's 2015 Zero Waste Resolution, which is to divert 90% of the county's waste away from landfilling and incineration. And so the plan is a combined plan, but Section 7 and the supporting Appendix F are all geared towards those zero waste efforts. And all of the other sections are there to meet the state's regulatory requirements. So in that same vein, the plan does recommend, or the goals are classified as mandatory and aspirational. The goals highlighted in red are those as required by DEQ to meet those regulatory requirements. And then the ones in blue are the goals that the county board can elect at future points in time to make sure that we're moving towards that 90% diversion goal. So it does lay out 15 voluntary program enhancements and initiatives, and there are four policy programs that are there, all timed over the short, medium, and long term. And we did include three intermediate diversion targets or milestones to help staff and the county gauge our progress in meeting that 90% goal. And so at those various points in time, we'll be able to evaluate our progress and to put forward additional recommendations or requests to make sure that we're meeting those targets. So there are seven short-term cumulative initiatives that are presented here, all occurring within, hopefully, the first five years of adoption by the board. And then the medium and long-term cumulative impacts or initiatives. One is recommended for the medium, and then all the others are identified as long-term. But just for additional clarity, the long-term in the plan is stated as happening anytime between 2024 or plan adoption and that stated deadline of 2038. And so it is with all of those initiatives that we are able to pursue that 90% diversion goal. And this slide just demonstrates how all of those initiatives contribute towards us being able to reach that. So we did do substantial public engagement, holding several town halls and requesting public feedback, with the most recent public comment period being from November 1st through December 1st of this previous year. And what we found from that community feedback represented a substantial compromise across the community. It fell within a spectrum of support for waste reduction or diversion, with sentiments ranging from not being, not enough being done in the plan to get us towards those goals and sustainability objectives, while solid waste management being a low priority or some opposition to that as compared to other community priorities. And so through all of that feedback and engagement, there was no significant changes warranted because of the compromised nature of the plan and not everyone getting everything that they would like to have been identified in the plan. But we did add some minor edits for clarity or further articulation to make sure that things were accurately reflected the way that they needed to be. And with that, I will turn it over for additional conversation.
So I spent microphone. Thank you for the presentation. Are there advisory group presentations? Are our advisory groups present?
We do. We have members of the Stormwater Committee and.
So first, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, in person, Ms. White and Mr. Musso. Whoever, yeah. Thank you so much for the work, by the way, in advance. Yes, please.
Yes.
So you can, you can also sit in, but it's okay.
It doesn't matter. My name is Carolyn White. I am a longtime county resident. I have lived here since 1987. I don't know if this is the reason I was picked to say something here, but I was an initial member of the Solid Waste Committee in 2001, and I co-wrote the 2004 plan because at that point in time, we only had a part-time staff member associated with the program. And so the volunteers were doing heavy lifting. We are in a very different place today. I think we're in a good place compared to where we were back then. We've made significant strides, not only in the residential focus for the program, which was the initial emphasis, but also in multifamily and commercial, in schools, in county buildings, in many other areas. Because we're in a different place, we have some different challenges. We had low-hanging fruit back then, and we certainly continue to have willingness of residents to do what they can to be environmentally responsible. Now we're at a stage where getting those additional diversion efforts will take more effort and potentially more cost per amount diverted. So there are more difficult decisions to be made on what resources do the county, does the county spend, and when and how do they spend those resources to get additional diversion rates? A couple of principles that I think, that certainly I subscribe to, and I think that the committee largely recognized as well. This plan is aspirational. You know, we can say zero waste, but getting to zero waste is a very different thing and would require very significant behavioral change and costs perhaps that the county probably is not ready to do anytime soon. And as a, with my taxpayer hat on, there certainly is a balance in the priorities that were mentioned. You know, back in the early part of this effort, it was very easy to say, you know, relatively low cost, big bang for the buck, got a lot of, lot of results. I think that is true for the first three or four items in the short-term list for this plan, where for relatively small expenditures, we have a potential for diverting quite a bit of solid waste from the stream. The committee spent a lot of time talking through each individual item that was under consideration. And in general, there was a sense of going for bang for the buck. You know, if it was relatively low cost with relatively good diversion, that was an easy one. We have a lot listed in here, not all of them fall in that category. Sometimes maybe it was fairly low cost and fairly low results, but if it's pretty low cost, why not go ahead and do it? So they were balancing those kinds of things. I think as the county board goes forward, many of these items will require action, either budget action or resource allocation, to actually carry them out in the future. Just because they're in a plan, the plan can change. And I do recognize, and I think the committee recognized, that decisions will have to be made going forward. And again, this is aspirational, probably more than practical past the short term. So, and there are probably some opportunities in the county that are not specifically highlighted in the plan for direct county action. And I'm thinking in particular, the county operations and the county schools. Frankly, most of the solid waste efforts in this plan and that the county undertakes, it's more of an indirect impact. We're sponsoring a program, we're providing outreach, we're doing enforcement of existing codes, but another party is actually carrying out the waste or the treatment or the management. So I would like to see a little more effort in the county, in particular in schools, where I understand there's some mean consideration of programs. But let's be honest, most of the efforts in terms of waste in the county are going to be dealing with third parties, not directly county generating its own waste. So the degree to which we can increase outreach, support, education, that's where you're likely going to have the best results in terms of being able to divert waste. I mentioned that the first two or three, I think in particular, are very good in terms of the diversion. As you get further down the list, probably not as much impact. And there are going to be hard decisions ahead, probably not in the short term, but in the medium to long term, about where do you spend resources to get that diversion? I would like to recommend that we continue the positive path the way that we've been on for the last 20 years. Makes me feel old to say that. But to continue that pathway and to continue to do what things make sense to do. I don't think we'll ever get to zero waste, honestly, but it's a nice thing to say. And to the degree we can move in that direction, that is a good thing. I would like to see, not as part of this plan, but as the county moves forward in making decisions, as the waste energy facility turns over in 2038, and as we move to the lower cost, I believe that's next year, I would like to see a better analysis than what's in this plan of how the money works. So for example, the money saved from the fees at the WTE facility, where that will be spent and how that affects the other costs that are under consideration for carrying out this plan. And with that, I thank you for the opportunity to serve on the committee and to speak here today, and I encourage you to adopt the solid waste plan. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for serving on the committee. We really appreciate it. Mr. Musso, did you have something?
Good morning, members of the board. I will just be brief, just to reiterate, my colleague on the Solid Waste Committee. So just to, just to reiterate, I appreciate getting the opportunity to be the representative of the Arlington Chamber, more of the representative of the business community at this committee. It was a really productive series of conversations about all sort of different policies and initiatives that would ultimately achieve these important aspirational goals. And we very much appreciate, especially in the shorter term and longer term phases of the project, the focus on incentives-based program, program enhancements, volunteer initiatives, as we find that the chamber believes that this is really the best way forward in terms of getting all factors of the community in Arlington, residences, businesses, property owners and so forth, to get this correct amount of education and support to facilitate these goals. Some of you might have had a chance to review the letter that was sent from the Arlington Chamber of Commerce emphasizing the focus on incentive versus mandates and requesting one amendment regarding the comprehensive organics management to steer that in a more incentives-based direction. But overall, just want to reiterate that the chamber very much supports the plan, supports the broad aspirational goals included in the plan, and greatly appreciates being part of this process. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think we have Ms. McIntyre here from our C2E2.
Stand up here. Good morning, I'm Joan McIntyre, speaking for the Climate Change, Energy and Environment Commission. As I spoke at the last solid waste, at the last meeting on the Solid Waste Management Plan and Zero Waste Plan, last month, I'll keep my comments brief. As you move forward with adopting this plan, I ask that you view this plan as a starting point and not fixed for the next two decades, and set the expectations for continued improvement over time. Recognizing that our waste streams have a serious impact for the climate and for the, for the climate crisis and the environment, needs to be uppermost in minds going forward. As guiding principles, priority should be given to reduce and reduce strategies while continuing to advance effective recycling, including composting. The county and APS should lead by example with ambitious targets for waste reduction, reuse, and waste diversion. Management of construction and demolition with the goal for reducing waste and diversion as much as possible to reuse and recycling should be part of the plan's initiatives. Special attention is needed for improving recycling in multifamily buildings where it's particularly challenging for residents to conveniently do so. Reducing waste and moving for our circular economy is a complex and challenging issue. As with most climate environmental issues, thinking globally and acting locally, C2E2 looks forward to continuing to work with the Solid Waste Bureau and the county departments to advance, to make zero waste a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. And do we have any public speakers?
We do. One moment, please.
Okay.
Our first public speaker is Mr. Jim Lyon, representing EcoAction Arlington for two minutes, followed by Mr. Dean Amell, representing the Sierra Club for five.
Thank you. I don't see Jim Lyon.
I believe Mr. Lyon is joining us remotely.
Can you see me and hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, good. Good morning. Jim Lyon, EcoAction Advocacy Chair. I'll be brief, spending a beautiful Saturday on waste issues is likely no one's idea of joyous fulfillment. Appreciate all the staff time, the notable elements that went into the plan, yet it comes with disappointments. The county previously set bold goals to get to net zero carbon, called for a whole government approach to achieve it. The waste plan here is framed for a 20-year horizon, and given how fast climate science is rolling in, society has to pick it up. And we've got to be flexible to adjust. Yet the plan falls short on climate matters. It's light on acknowledging the climate impacts from the waste stream, and instead emphasizes waste diversion over waste reduction. We need to generate less waste with greenhouse gas embedded elements. Given this challenge, we think strongly that this plan should be not considered an endgame, but it should also be a floor, not a ceiling. And with staff guidance, that efforts be encouraged to exceed objectives, not just meet them. A couple of brief areas to hit. Construction and demolition debris has climate impacts, needs to be tracked and reduced. They're not given a lot of attention in the plan. Greater incentives for reducing construction waste and reusing are needed. Multifamily housing, as Joan just hit on, broader and deeper solutions must be tried. We hear from residents all the time wanting to do the right thing, but they're frustrated by the poor non-existent systems in their building. And Arlington schools, the waste plan goes light on them. The school system must be a more pronounced player in this work, particularly in waste reduction and community education. There's a great opportunity here to educate students and parents on how to do this in their own lives and what could be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon.
And our next and final speaker is Mr. Dean Amell.
Good morning. My name's Dean Amell. I'm Chair of the Potomac River Group of the Sierra Club, and I've been a member of Arlington's Solid Waste Committee and its predecessors for about 34 years. I participated in the committee's recent meetings to update the solid waste management plan, and I support its adoption by the board. However, there are few aspects of the draft plan that are weaker than I and the Sierra Club would prefer. First, and this is things that Joan and Jim have already touched on, the report could do more to strengthen recycling in the multifamily dwellings where about 75, 70% of your constituents reside. Many multifamily residences have structural barriers to recycling. For example, they may have a trash chute that is easy and convenient, while recycling is more difficult. I encourage the board to direct solid waste staff to work with planning staff to set site plan standards for future buildings to ensure that recycling is at least as convenient as throwing things in the trash. Second, I urge the board, direct staff, to do some initial analysis of construction and demolition waste in Arlington. Arlington is not required to regulate such waste, and we have no good data on its size or composition. However, studies in other communities suggest that the volume of CND waste could be as large as or larger than the volume of trash from the residential sector. Before we can take steps to regulate this waste, we have to measure it. Third, the plan puts most of its emphasis on recycling rather than on waste reduction and reuse, which rank higher in EPA's waste hierarchy. While it's too late to include staff who would aid waste reduction efforts in this year's budget, the board should push for such positions next year. Fourth, the plan ignores the mandate in the Zero Waste Resolution the board passed in 2015 that county government take the lead on efforts to reduce trash generation. This plan should be altered to explicitly recognize this county board mandate. And finally, the plan fails. And finally, the plan fails to address the climate impact of our current waste disposal practices. Reduction in greenhouse gases gives us another reason to move from recycling toward reuse and waste reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amell. And I believe that's our final speaker?
No further speakers.
All right, colleagues, the discussion's now with the board. I know, I believe Mr. Karantonis is ready to make a motion, and I believe we also have a resolution that's going to address a number of issues. I wonder if we want to have some discussion first, and then do the resolution. What do you think? All right, let's go ahead. Make the motion. Let's do it, and we'll take it that way, because that seems to be how you're ready to go.
Actually, the resolution queues up several issues that have been in discussion.
Yeah, no, I didn't know if I wanted to queue them up or do that. That's just fine. Do you want to make a motion?
I will. I am pleased to make the county manager's, to move the county manager's recommendation to adopt the resolution that we will be able to put on the screen right now, which is in its initial form in Attachment A of the staff report, to adopt the Solid Waste Management Plan, as shown in Attachment B, which is the plan of the staff report. And now on our screen, you can see the resolution that was published with highlighted amendments that I hope will find their acquaintance of all colleagues here.
Thank you. Let's get a second, and then I'll ask you to speak to your motion. Is there a second? All right. Lots of seconds. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. So I will, I hope that's okay with our county attorney not to read all the words and the changes verbatim?
Yeah, that's fine, as long as we later publish them.
But I will address them. Okay. So as everybody, so just for those who are with us at this moment, and for the record, given that the Solid Waste Management Plan is a state-mandated planning document, and as such, it needs to be responsive to the Commonwealth's regulatory requirements, one valid way to adopt a plan is to provide guidance that goes beyond state mandates, and this is through this resolution of the county board. This resolution reflects the thinking and intention of the board emerging from the previous work with our community, the Solid Waste Committee, thank you so much, and our expert staff. It has eight various clauses. The first four lay out the object and the regulatory frame of the resolution as originally published. The fifth and the sixth clause recognize zero waste management as the core and leading strategy, and explicitly connects waste management with greenhouse emission reductions and climate mitigation. It directs staff to develop a zero-waste plan at the next revision, which is mandatory in five years of the Solid Waste Master Plan. It prioritizes waste reduction and reuse, and a minimum of 90% diversion from landfilling and incineration. The seventh clause commits us, so the county government, to actively support legislative initiatives that promote diversion and extended producer responsibility, as well as increased local authority in these matters. Finally, the eighth clause commits us, the county board and Arlington County enterprise-wide, to lead by example and explicitly encourages APS, the Arlington Public School System, to be an example in waste, to follow, to be harmonized with us, and be an example in waste reduction, reuse, and diversion as well. The resolution clauses and direction add direction and intentionality. First, it will be resolved to adopt the plan in compliance with Virginia law. Secondly, it explicitly directs staff to study and recommend best management practices in an additional, but not less critical, field of waste management, which is construction and demolition waste, with the same three R goals: reduction, reuse, and recycling. Third, it directs staff to develop, publish, and keep updated the Zero Waste Dashboard by the end of this fiscal year 2025. What you measure, as this has been said, what you measure gets done, what you measure publicly, it's even more so. Fourth, it adopts the voluntary elements of the Solid Waste Management Plan in the Attachment B. So that's my short presentation, hopefully short presentation.
No, that's just fine. We weren't doing the timers, but you're good. You're good. Thank you. Shall I move it on to other colleagues? Mr. DeFranti, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Karantonis, for your leadership, and thank you to the advocates for the comments and the engagement. The resolution is sufficient, I think covers a lot of the issues raised, and I think is a step forward. Really want to thank staff for working through us, through these issues with us as we were sort of trying to incorporate additions. Mindful, the committee did a ton of work, and so that's why the resolution seems like the right venue for this. Two concluding other thoughts. One is, with respect to the chamber, I know Mr. Musso may have had to leave, but I think we can figure out the medium-term issues over a little bit of time, and so that's why I'm not inclined to get involved in rewriting the plan as to that. And then I would say that for advocates and just our community in general, I think that the dashboard, it may be done before, I think there's some chance before the end of fiscal '25, but that dashboard is really the key. There are a lot of other pieces that are excellent and important, but for me, that dashboard is a great step. We're going to measure what we're doing, and then we're going to work forward on it. And that's what helped our Community Energy Plan 25 years or 20 years ago when it was adopted. We started measuring, and we made progress. That doesn't mean enough. We've got to make more, but that is the piece that I'm most excited about in this. Happy to support it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Coffey?
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate our speaker's focus on the multi-unit building issue. I think, you know, that's something I've talked with the Sierra Club about, as well as, I think, our staff. We had a fairly extensive conversation about the realities of recycling in our tall buildings, and that's something that I think, long-term, you know, I'm going to keep working on and hopefully chipping away at. I think there's a lot that we would like to incentivize our buildings to do, and we have some good leverage in the site plan process, but not as much in the operational phases of buildings, and particularly for buildings that were built long, long ago before some of these goals were really put in place. How do we get them to kind of come with us on this journey? Because we do need people to opt in and participate, and so that's tough. But we're going to keep working, and we're going to figure that out. You know, I think my anxiety, my climate anxiety is always high, but thinking about this plan is really, there's so much reliance on people doing the things that we want them to do, and doing them correctly as we want them to do it. I think there's no other way, right? Like, we're all, we're a community of many, many private citizens, and so we can't recycle for anyone. We can't make them buy less food that they throw away at the end of the week, but we can try and educate, and we can try and make it as easy as possible for them to do the things that we want to do. And I think that this plan is a really strong place to jump off and move forward with the actual implementation. I think, really, I'm so interested and excited for the future of our educational campaigns, and how do we bring the community into this conversation and help them understand the choices that they can make? I think I've had conversations with peers where I think many people are just not aware of the options that are available to them, and bridging that gap, you know, is really, really critical. Because people in Arlington, you know, we hold a lot of the same values, and I think people want to do the right thing. People really care about the environment, about climate change, and recognize that this is part of the solution, but may not have the tools yet or the knowledge that would empower them to do what they definitely would like to be doing. And so, excited for the future of implementation of our Zero Waste Plan and working together. And, you know, it's heartening to hear that we've gone from a half-time staff member to basically a team working on this full-time. And I know our staff are really committed and committed to the urgency of the climate crisis as well. So thank you all, and thank you to our staff who, our staff and our community groups that have put many, many, many hours into getting to where we are today.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham, did you have anything to say?
You're reading my mind. Scary. I just want to thank everyone as well. I think most of it has been said, so I won't repeat. But there were a couple ideas that were shared in some of the letters that I just wanted to elevate a smidge. And one is, Mr. Manager for our economic development team, maybe to consider whether there could be an innovation fund or an award or something to support the reuse and circular economy, as well as construction waste management. So I know they've been a little busy with a few burning fires, but it'd be great to think about whether we could integrate that over the next year. The second is with our youth. We hear the cry for all of government to include APS, and we are spending lots of time with our school board partners, so we'll continue to offer staff support and encouragement there. I would also ask and have asked, but will ask publicly, that our environmental advocates consider what sort of out-of-school time programming or programs they could support our young people with. So I think the best thing is to get the youngsters doing the work themselves, and we have some funding in this coming two years to support out-of-school programming, and it'd be great to have some of that be environmental. Finally, there was a recommendation about putting stickers on the cans, you know, that just helps us understand that the, you know, that the black can is expensive and climate-high-impact, and the green can is the least. So some of those just little things, I think we could, I know you are doing, and appreciate the community members bringing forth additional ideas. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Mr. Karantonis, do you want to say something more?
Well, just briefly, Madam Chair. There are, Ms. White, it was an excellent presentation that you made, and some very, very thoughtful points that, you know, stuck with me. One is, we cannot achieve zero waste. And actually, every time I've been able to meet with people who are real, even international leaders of that, it's not about zero waste. It's about adopting zero-waste strategies. It's about putting, and I had one from the Gaia Project who gave me a card once, and it had five points of that. He said, "Set a goal to zero waste. Set a goal to zero waste." The number two is, "Hold producers accountable," which we cannot do, but we, you bet we have to go down to Richmond and ask for that. The third one was, "Encourage responsible consumption habits," which we can do. We have heard a lot of that. The fourth one was, "Build zero-waste infrastructure." So have the things in place that are needed to comply with the three Rs: reduce, reuse, and recycle. And prioritize social and environmental justice, which we haven't talked too much about, but it's a very big part of what we are talking about. As a second part, we received a letter from the Apartment and Office Building Association of Metropolitan Washington, just to make my colleague's point here. This letter includes incredible statistics. They say that they represent members that own 475,000 units in Washington, D.C., 45,000 units here in Arlington, 161 million square, sorry, 183 million square feet of office. Figure out how important these people are, and how concentrated. We know them. We have actually direct access to them. And receiving a letter that says, "Well, we find that our operation is very complicated and complex, and please, we want to be just collaborative, et cetera." No, we are at the point where this is a real carbon footprint, a very real one. The United Nations calculates that just the separation of organics can reduce a city's methane emissions by 62%, just a mere separation, just doing that. So I think that this is the challenge that we have in front of us, to connect for the very first time, that is not only good in general for the planet, but a critical climate mitigation strategy, the waste, dealing with our waste. And I agree with everything that is said. I also have to thank, as a concluding remark, all my colleagues, especially Mr. DeFranti and Graham Weincheck as well, for Yeoman's work and insistence and persistence to work with all you, the advocates who have been positioning this issue in a completely different place. I think that this is the beginning of a different trajectory, and we want to be really on top of that and make sure that we see that performing. Thank you. That was everything I wanted to say, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Karantonis. That's just great. Well, I want to thank everybody. I really think it is culture and education and behavior having, and I know I've told this story before, visiting my daughter in Austria, very carefully dividing all of the kitchen waste and scraps, and she's saying, you know, "I just thought it was because they were just totally compulsive as a culture," which they might be. But there was a reason, and it actually went, as I've said, went down into the basement and went, which actually provided the hot water for the building, was with their waste. I mean, it was all right there on site. So you've got cultures, even in wealthy areas, where people do an awful lot of this. And then, as I said, I'm sorry, I've talked about my two and a half years in Africa, when absolutely everything was reused, because nobody had anything. I mean, a plastic bag was like a treasure. Nobody would throw that out. And so there are different reasons for doing it that are cultural and that are also just economic. People just can't afford. Unfortunately, that's one of the downsides of being as wealthy a culture as we are, because we can just afford to throw things out. And it's part of our being America, coming to this new world where everything was, seemed like totally indestructible, and there was unlimited supplies of everything we should possibly want. We never had to worry about cleaning ourselves up, cleaning up after ourselves. But we do. So we're making some real progress. We're doing some major headwinds. I think changing culture and changing behavior is probably the hardest one we've got. But absolutely, putting the structures in place is the way to do it. Thank you to all of our advocates for doing as much as you do with public education and helping us. Thank you for our staff for getting the structures in place to make it happen. Thank you to Mr. Karantonis, Mr. DeFranti, and Matt Weincheck for doing as much as you did to get us to this place, and really appreciate the work you've done there. I'm going to be watching this in the future. I'm not going to be on the board anymore, but it's been exciting. When I got on the board, that we didn't talk about this very much, and now it's really, really taking hold. And I think we are making progress, and we will keep moving forward, I think, with a motion that's been on the table, and I think we're about to adopt. Ms. Cunningham, would you like to say anything more? All right, all in favor of the motion before us, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you all so very much, and really appreciate it. Go out and enjoy the nice outside, which is what we should be doing. And the board is in recess.
Not yet.
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have one minor point of housekeeping to bring up.
I was meant to ask you if there's anything more. Yes, no, no, and I didn't know. Are there any other items? Mr. Kushner, sorry.
Absolutely. One minor point of housekeeping with respect to the vote on item number 36. While Mr. Karantonis, Vice-Chair Karantonis, seconded the motion, it was not audible in the meeting recording. His microphone didn't register, so I'm reading back into the record that Ms. Cunningham moved deferral, which was then seconded by Mr. Karantonis, adopted by a vote of 4 to 1.
Thank you for that clarification. It is in the record now. Is there anything else to come before the board?
There are no further items.
All right. The board is now in recess until Tuesday, June 18, at 3:00 p.m. We will see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you.